Pete, you're still muted, so none of us online can hear you.
Okay, take two.
Patty, can you hear us?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Fantastic. All right, so I will call the meeting order of the Land Use Review Board. I would ask that we go around and give brief introductions. My apologies to those in the room. You're going to hear this again from the top. I'm Sarah Adams, the vice chair.
Chris Consulting Board Member.
Brooke Dingle Dean, Board Member.
Alex Van Hagen, Village Member and Chittany County Resident.
And perhaps our staff can go next. We'll sit there on the side.
I'm Caitlin Hayes. I'm one of the four leaders for District 4 of Chittany County.
Hi, I'm Adrian Matta. We're District 4, 6, and 9. Or it's Will S. R.
Pete Gill, Executive Director.
Charlie Baker, Executive Director of the Chittany County Regional Planning Commission.
I'm Taylor Newton. I'm the Planning Program Director at CCRPC.
I'm Kate McCarthy. I'm a Senior Planner and Project Manager here at CCRPC.
Paul, do you want to?
Paul Conner, Director of Planning and Zoning in the City of South Burlington.
Aaron Tanever, Director of Planning and Zoning in Coontown, Shelburne.
Jackie Murphy, Member of the Colchester Select Board and Member of the Chittany County Regional Planning Commission.
Non-D Needle, GIS and IT Manager, CCRPC.
All right, fantastic, and thank you. I think what I'd like to do is sort of give an explanation of the pre-application process. So the pre-application process per guidelines and also per state statute is a chance for the Land Use Review Board to review and provide comments back to the regional planning agencies on the application that performs for it. And so at this point, we have received comments from all of our sister agencies that can be viewed online through our portal. If you go to act250.bromont.gov and go to the Act 181 process, under Regional Plan Review, there's a link and you can search in it for the CCRPC. It's Regional Plan 4, and the entirety of the regional plan submission is online as well as public comments received and sister comments. Those are due today. We're going to extend them to the end of day. So that should be updated as of now, and we'll endeavor to update it and throughout the day. We also have on, or will shortly be on our website in that portal, the presentation that you'll see today. A little bit about what we're going to have going on today is an overview of the plan, the plan process, and then we'll be doing a virtual site visit. We are going to have time for questions at the end for the public. There will be opportunities for the board to ask questions as we visit each area. I'm happy to see questions as we go right now, but are there any questions to start? All right, and folks are online. It looks like everybody's joined in the traditional way. There's also, if you have a copy of our agenda, if you joined by phone, directions as to unmute, mute yourself, and raise your hand. Please feel free to do that raise hand question, or raise hand if you have questions. All right, with that being said, I will turn it over to Chittany County Regional Planning Commission for an overview of their plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and Chair, members of the board, glad to have you here. I'll do, you get stuck with me for like the first 10 minutes or so, doing a little intro to the context of Chittany County, and then Taylor will pick it up and get into the actual plan document. And so there's just the rough agenda we think we're on. And so I'll need to go to the next slide. So just a little bit kind of economic focused first. We have had a lot of business growth here and a lot of job growth. You can see the R rate of job growth and jobs, business growth has been almost double the pace of the state. So we have about a third of the jobs, a third of the businesses are here. Our household income is higher than average in the state. However, one notable thing here at the bottom of the table is we also have the largest concentration of poverty in the state, which sometimes gets masked by the overall higher income. So we have about 12,000 folks living in poverty here. About 20% of the folks in poverty in the state are here. And while we do have, the number of jobs has been fairly consistent over the last 20 or so years. We have had this dynamic of more and more people are having to move outside of the county to work in Chittany County. So we had 75% of our employees lived and worked, or worked and lived here in 2002. In 2022, that was down to 65%. So that has been a trend that has been prominent for us in trying to address by having more housing within Chittany County. Next slide. And just some broader demographics, our population's pretty close to 170,000 now. Our age is younger than the state, no surprise, and that's driven by college students and all of the people in this room. Sorry. But you can see our, our population growth as a growth rate, you know, has been almost triple the state's average. Still pretty low if you look at it, you know, in terms of an annual basis compared to the rest of the country. But one major fact, we are getting more diverse. Of that 12,000 increase in population between 2010 and 2020, only 30 of those people net were white. So 99.7% were people of color. And it's just pointing to just the changing demographics broadly. Yeah, we'll see things are different in Washington than they were a few years ago, so we'll see if this changes, but it wasn't all refugees, right? There were a lot of other dynamics going on to have that amount of growth, especially from people of color. And yeah, we only, we were doing about 300 refugees a year, so this is way more than that, right? So that would have been 3,000 of the 12,000 might be from refugee resettlement. And then just to, the 2017 Population Employment Household Forecast were adopted by our board back in 2017. And you can see, just looking at the right, the 14% forecasted increase in population. And just really notable is that we need a lot more households today than we used to for, to keep up with that population growth. So you see 25% increase in household growth compared to just the 14%. And you can see down at the bottom, in 1970, we were like basically three and a quarter people per house. Now we're two and a quarter, or 2.3. So household size has been a major factor across the country in driving the need for more housing growth. Go to the next slide. And so let's switch brands. We do the housing targets. Welcome. 2050, we are looking, you know, kind of the longer range, not at the short, short-term 2030 number, just for planning purposes. The lower range of 15,000 or 16,000 over the next 25 years is pretty close to what we've been averaging decade over decade. The middle target is 31,000, 32,000. The high target for Chittany County is 47,000 housing units. That is a lot. Just to illustrate that even more, if we go from the 1950s, so 1950 to pretty current, we've, we've built about 50,000 housing units in Chittany County over the last 70-ish years. Building another 50,000 in 25 years would be some amazing miraculous feat, which I'm not expecting to happen. But those are the targets that we were given from the state. And Taylor will get more into this as he's talking about individual municipalities and things, but in general, we've been working with our municipalities, talking about trying to meet the middle target. So, which is, you know, more than 1,000 housing units per year. We got over that, I think, in 2024, so that is not crazy. It's a challenge and a significant bar. You can see down at the bottom, I tried to break out what that, the low target rate per decade would be, and you can compare it to the previous decades. So the low target, 6,300, you can see, we've been kind of doing that for a long time. The 2020s is a partial decade, so don't take too much away from the 2020s, right? The 12.6, as I mentioned, is, you know, that's 1,260 a year. That is a more aggressive number than we've ever had. So, and that's just to get to the middle range. And I won't talk about high range anymore. Keep that down, but that's, that would be huge changes for us. Any questions on this one? Sorry, I'll just for a second because I'm just throwing a lot of data at you. Okay. Made sense. And so just so you look at these numbers, this is the actual number of housing units that were built in the 1950s, the 1960s. You can see that, you know, from 4,000, you can really kind of see the trend of, you know, the 70s and 80s. We had peak years of, you know, 84, 9,400. That was kind of post-interstate. IBM was booming, you know, those were, we had a lot of growth happening and then reactions after that. So we'll go to the next slide. Sorry, a lot of words here, but wanted to kind of emphasize how important smart growth is to our overall regional plan strategy and has been for quite a while. The previous regional plan had 80% of growth. I think maybe I'll get more into this in another coming slide, but but right now, the draft 2026 plan is trying to accomplish 90% of residential growth in those areas planned for growth, which includes the Tier 1B eligible future land use areas as well as the transition. So, which is just a pretty small percentage added on top, but and just, you're probably all familiar with the smart growth principles, but I wanted to put them up here. You know, we get to the compact center separated by, surrounded by rural countryside, which is coming from the statutory goal. You know, but we're talking about mixed use, having transportation options, protecting the environment, natural resources, historic resources, strengthening ag and forestry. And, and the diversity of housing, but you can see overall, there's a big emphasis on getting the growth to happen where we have infrastructure, and by doing that, that does protect the natural resources and our ag and forest economies. And just a little note, that is kind of an old statutory reference because that chapter got deleted during Act 181 writing. These smart growth principles are not actually in statute anymore. But that's one of the things on our cleanup list. I don't know if it's on yours. Okay, next slide.
That part of statute may go away in 2030 or something like.
Yeah, it's still hanging around a little bit.
Still hanging around a little bit.
Gotcha, thank you. And then just did a really simplified version of our land use map. Again, 90% of new housing trying to land in that 11.6% that's dark colored on this map. And just to note, colored all the rural ag and forestry and the rural conservation green in this map here, just to give you a sense of how much of our county, even in Chittany County, we have 60% that is in either conservation or ag and forestry. And if you get down to individual parcels, there's really an overlap there. A lot of the conserved lands are in ag and forestry, right? So they're not, don't think of these as separate. There's some amount of, and as we've talked with our towns, where they've done a lot of conservation easements, they wanted to make sure they, those conservation easements were reflected on our maps. So you see, we have 35% in rural conservation right now. Of course, there's neat forest land, et cetera, in there as well. But just, I think this is a little different perception than people have of Chittany County. Just when you hear the word Chittany County, you think we're like 80% built out. That is not the case. We're actually 60% pretty rural ag and forest. Okay, go to the next slide. And then this is the breakdown of the future land use areas. I'm sure Taylor will get into this more deeply. You can see that 11.6%, those first five land use categories I mentioned, which include the four that are Tier 1B eligible, and then plus that transition. The transition is just a little bit over 1, 1.1%. The other areas in the middle, again, I'm sure Taylor will get into this some more, but one notable thing is that we have a land use area that's not in statute for some pretty large land consumptive uses in Camp Johnson, the airport, and the Ethan Allen firing range, which are, you know, thousands and thousands of acres in Chittany County, but didn't really seem to fit well in, in the other, in the defined land use categories. And then we have the rural areas, you're kind of repeating some of what I just said, but that's almost 83% of our county is in the rural areas. And so infrastructure, mentioned a little bit about trying to focus our growth where we have existing infrastructure. And you can see, if you took that, that dark blue map that I did a few minutes ago and compared it to this, most of what we're trying to accomplish is taking advantage of the existing infrastructure that we have in Chittany County and having more infill and redevelopment happen within those areas. You will see very few parcels going outside of existing sewer service, water service areas for our growth areas. So it's almost all infill. The darker shades here with the crosshatch are the sewer service areas. The blue is not water, but it's water service areas. So you can see major areas in Colchester and Charco in particular have water service without sewer service areas. And by the way, when, just as we were looking at this, some of the state layers, the sewer service area layer in particular, the state GIS, that VCGI, is not a sewer service area. It's something different, and I don't know, and it's very outdated. We might get into that later. We can, yeah, we can talk more about that, but this app is outdated. And we're going to try to provide an updated layer to VCGI. Melanie's coordinating with Josh Blaska, so we'll, we'll make that work. Yeah, you can go to the next slide. And a little similarly, this is a little finer grain, because this is actual sidewalks and bike paths and things. You can see the multimodal transportation system is very focused in those same areas. If you overlay those sewer and water service areas with this map of the bike and ped network. And is that, am I getting closer to the end?
One more slot, I think.
Oh, thanks. So this is, you're kind of taking that decade over decade growth idea, but also looking at, so where did housing land in our landscape here? The blue is the areas planned for growth, so about 11.6% or so. And in 19, you know, starting in the 1950s, you know, 92% of our housing units were landing in those areas. You can see as kind of a suburbanization movement happened in the 70s, 80s, and continued into the 90s, the percent happening in our growth areas went way down, down to 67%, 68%, you know, down to around 70%. And, you know, what is that, what's the converse of that? That means there was a lot more rural housing development that happened. You know, in some other venues, and, you know, I think Act 250 was a factor in that because the jurisdictional threshold kind of made, you know, doing nine-lot subdivisions or large lot subdivisions was a factor in this, but there were also other dynamics happening in the housing market at the same time. You know, we have, Chittany County is 6.5% of the state's land area with 26% of the population. Yeah, so obviously the densest part of the state, from Winuski to Beals Gore. Beals Gore's not very dense. But, but we have a lot more conserved than planned for development. And, you know, our towns, just to look at the bar chart again, when I got here in the, you know, in 2008, I think one of the things that was really notable for me was that all of our towns had really been doing a good job in their town plans. Maybe they didn't have all the zoning there yet, but they were all, you know, really trying to implement smart growth in every single town. And so you can see, you know, in the 2010s, a lot of those zoning changes started to take effect and reduce the amount of rural subdivisions that we had in prior decades. So that in the most recent decade, you know, we're at 87% now happening in these areas planned for growth. And it was getting so close to 90, we were like, let's shoot for 90 going forward. So that is the plan going forward is to get to 90%. Anything else to cover here?
Well, just a point after we get to this slide, I think it's very interesting, but math, something, right? This, this talks about development in the 70s, 80s, and 90s that occurred within areas planned for growth as we define those areas today.
That's right.
We didn't have the same areas planned for growth in the 70s, 80s, and 90s that we do today. I presume it was a much smaller, more constrained area, meaning it's likely that those percentages reflected above the actual plan at the time were, were far more skewed to rural area subdivisions.
It could be, yeah. Although a lot of the, the water, wastewater got built in the 70s, 80s, right? So I don't know the answer to that, but certainly, you know, if you go back in time, you know, yeah, 1950s, the infrastructure wasn't as extensive as it is later on. And it's a good point, Alex. Thanks for making that point. I glossed over that, but, but it is, the blue is the areas planned for growth in this plan, which, yeah, wasn't the areas planned for growth back in those decades. Thanks. Any other questions, comments? No, I'm gonna, I think it's time for me to hand off to Taylor.
It is. So Charlie gave you some context for Chittany County. I'm going to talk about ECOs Plan itself. So ECOs, if you were wondering, stands for Environment, Community, Opportunity, and Sustainability. This branding of the regional plan came out of a really substantial rewrite of the regional plan in 2013. And it has a bit of name recognition in the county. People are bought into the brand of ECOs. So we've kept it in this second amendment of the original ECOs Plan from 2013. Next slide, Kate. The ECOs Plan really is four plans in one. So it is the regional plan, and it meets all the statutory requirements of a regional plan, but it is also our comprehensive economic development strategy, which is a kind of plan that's approved by EDA, the Economic Development Administration, through the US Department of Commerce. So that is, the SENS is a supplement to our full ECOs Plan. We have a SENS that is actually a joint SENS with Washington County, parts of Orange County, Addison County, and Burlington. The ECOs Plan is also the MTP, the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. That's a specific type of plan that we need to have because we are a metropolitan planning organization, which is a federal designation for urban areas over 50,000 people. It provides us with some certain access to federal highway funds, to do transportation planning, but also some responsibilities along with that as well. The ECOs Plan is also our enhanced energy plan. Like many, like all regional plans, we created an enhanced energy plan around 2016, 2017 to advance state's energy goals. Next slide, Kate. So the ECOs Plan is mostly composed of 17 chapters that reflect the 17 goals of Chittany County. You'll see a really wide breadth of things that are planned for in the regional plan. It is truly comprehensive. We also have two key themes that run throughout the entire plan itself. That is climate, adaptive climate change. It's also equity and inclusion. So we've tried to address those two themes in all 17 of our chapters. Each of these 17 chapters has associated actions that go along with it and indicators to identify in future years whether or not we're making progress towards attaining our goals. I also want to note that we implement our plan through adopting an annual work program. So each year, we're putting projects in our work program to actually move forward the goals of the plan itself. I also want to note that along with adopting this new plan, we're adopting, we're creating a new website. And slowly, not this round, but hopefully in future iterations, moving towards a web-based plan. Next slide, Kate. In terms of the plan itself, there is that base plan, the 17 goals, but there's also seven supplements. Supplement one talks about our engagement process. Kate's going to talk a little bit more in detail about what we have done in terms of engagement for developing this iteration of the plan. Supplement two is our crosswalk. That's where we make sure that we're meeting all those statutory requirements of all those four different kinds of plans. Supplement three is new. That's our environmental benefits and burdens analysis. There is a new state statutory goal, goal number 15, that talks about making sure we have an equitable distribution of environmental benefits and burdens that we dress such in our plan. This is our attempt to do that analysis associated with that goal. We have the SENS as supplement four, the MTP is supplement five, we have the enhanced energy plan is supplement six, and supplement seven is also new. That's a supplement where we try to show the math in terms of how we've done that, those municipal energy, or sorry, excuse me, municipal housing targets, and shown the math as well for the housing estimates that are also now required per, I believe that was the home act from Act 181. Next slide, Kate. So the development process itself, we've been, we've been working on this plan for a very long time. And part of that is because in prior years, we didn't use our full eight years, we would just use our, a five-year period. And that is because the SENS and the MTP, both federal plans, those expire after five years. And so we had been keeping an every-five-year plan cycle. But given things were happening at the state level, we decided to adopt our current MTP and SENS independently. And to actually hold back on our regional plan and use our full eight-year cycle and actually bring the MTP and the SENS back into the fold in 2026. And so in 2023, we decided to, to stop for a bit and do some engagements specifically with underrepresented communities because it felt like we hadn't really, hadn't done the hard work yet to inform the plan. Then we had to passage it back 181 in 2024. That was going to require us to do a new regional future land use map. And so we again paused work on our, on our overall plan and focused very much on the regional future land use map. We've been working with our municipalities and with our community partners over the past year to do another round of engagement, play to the plan and the map. And here we are, with pre-application in fall, winter 2025. And we'll talk more about what lays ahead in future slides. Next slide, Kate.
Okay. Thank you, Taylor. So as, as promised, I'm going to go into a little more detail about our two phases of public engagement over the course of the several years that we spent updating this plan. So, and Taylor mentioned, phase one of the engagement in 2023 really came from a realization by staff that there were a lot of groups that had not been involved in previous plan updates, even the big push that we did in 2013 to create the plan in the first place. So we made the decision to focus that additional engagement on underrepresented communities, especially those who do not speak English. That was the priority. And what we did was we worked with cultural liaisons to establish relationships and hold translated language-specific focus groups to hear from those groups about what they were, what they wanted us to know. And part, part of what that ended up involving was a lot of conversation about what, what's, how does local government work? How does regional government work? How do the policies up here connect to the actions on the ground and the decisions and who does what? So it was good relationship building as well as important information gathering. You can see the languages there that, that we got to interact with. In addition, we had a county-wide survey, a little more broadly. We tabled and went to events in various communities focusing, with the exception of Burlington, on some, some more rural places. We also tried to connect with folks who lived in manufactured home communities to make sure that those voices came to the table. And this, this ended up being very fruitful. People were generous with their time. We were fortunate to have people share their knowledge with us. This was before the meaningful engagement requirement was added to statute, but provided a good basis for that later work in phase two. So this is what we did between, what did you say, September 2024 and yesterday. Ongoing, important phase two, but focused in a little more narrowly on Act 181. And considering that we really wanted that to be a bottom-up process, working, building from the municipal planning efforts that had already happened, we, there was a real municipal focus. We worked a lot with select boards, city councils, planning commissions, housing committees. Many, many good and helpful meetings with planning staff, directors, planning commission chairs. Overall, over 140, and I think we consider this 150 at this point, you know, meetings. We also cast a, brought it up beyond municipalities with some focus groups, and those included topics like housing and land access, natural resources. We had one for state agency partners. And then we had three, three language-specific focus groups, again, this translation, that allowed us Um that allowed us to kind of weave the thread thread forward from the phase one engagement and um talk about how how the information had been used from previous engagement and and to maintain the the relationship. That, you know, that's a piece of feedback that we that we often get um from systemically marginalized groups but and from groups in generals. Well, what did you do with that information? And how can we stay involved? What does it mean to to really keep influencing this? So this process that we undertook helped with that. And then we had an interactive map viewer online where people could drop a pin and leave a comment. We got two hundred and thirty-eight of those comments from fifty-eight people. We gave people a chance to react to and respond to the housing targets and heard from forty-four folks on that. And then we went deeper on wanting to understand the um the needs of folks in manufactured home communities with a survey that got just over seventy responses. So um yeah, well over, well over a hundred and forty activities in the course of of nine or ten months. Again, having that conversation about what is a regional plan, what can a regional future land use map do? How will it and won't it influence your day-to-day, your property, et cetera? So really, really important opportunity to bring planning into the, into the wildlife. So what do we do with all this, with all this information? We did make a number of changes based on feedback, and we tried to be as responsive as we could, given that we're also working within the structure of the future land use area definitions that we have. We're working within the structure of what goes into a regional plan per statute. Um we got a lot of feedback on rural areas, um as you can see, and and it's already been mentioned that it was really important for uh people in Chittenden County communities that if something was permanently conserved within easement, it'd be represented as a dark green, even if it was a working land, even if it was a a rural area that could be one of the other rural categories. We um we designated those as rural conservation. We made sure to label floodplain and river corridor overlay using hash marks on the future land use map. We made some changes at the town level as well, like a- and they were around the edges, refining boundaries of transition areas, making sure that we aligned neighborhood areas with sewer and water infrastructure and the local future land use maps. And as as mentioned before, identifying that locally conserved land really broadened some local knowledge there. We put all of these changes into a revised online map viewer, which folks could see online. We also documented those changes in a, in a word document saying, here's what we heard, here's what we did. So we, we aimed for transparency there to show that people's feedback was valuable. Again, within, within the bounds of what we could influence um given statute. All right. So next, I'm going to talk a little bit about housing targets. We got a preview from Charlie. I want to talk a little bit about the methodology, which you can dive into very deeply in supplement seven when you're ready. Here's your preview. Um so how did we create this methodology? We took a lot of time to do it. We took about a year, and we worked with a committee of of very smart people who were willing to think through. With us are Planning Advisory Committee uh in 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 achieving our charge of disaggregating these to the town level. So the, this this subcommittee looked at it from a lot of different angles, how, how, how the, how those targets should be assigned to the municipalities, considering we do have a pretty interesting range of communities in Chittenden County, as I'm I'm certainly learning. Um they looked at things like infrastructure availability, land areas, zoning, historic growth rates, uh lo- local goals. And where the group landed was deciding to assign housing targets based on munis- on the type of municipality. We came up with three categories: cities, rural towns, and mixed urban and rural towns. And because each of those has a different form, a different availability of infrastructure, and different different land area, we took different approaches. And along the bottom row there, you can see those approaches summarized. We assigned sixty percent of the regional housing target to our four cities. Burlington, Essex Junction, South Burlington and Winewski, and then and they have access to water, wastewater, transit. We then further divided it by land area. Uh we received a lot of support from these municipalities that this ambitious target is in line with a lot of the planning already underway in these communities. But then for the rural towns, that was about three, three, three point eight percent of the regional housing target uh with the encouragement to promote village development, knowing that's gonna take some planning, and we're prepared to help them do that. The three point eight percent of the overall regional housing target represents approximately status quo for many of these communities in terms of the number of units that need to be produced annually to meet it. It is very similar to the historic growth rate. And then our mixed urban and rural communities got the rest. Uh it was weighted based on the availability of water and wastewater infrastructure. So we really did take into account infrastructure. We did not do a a capacity analysis per se, knowing that as a planning project, if we know we want a certain form, if we want development in a certain location, we can then plan to invest in the infrastructure to make that happen.
One thing I'll add on mixed urban and rural, Kate, is that we we did some weighting, but you know, um we also looked at our regional future land use map too. And so the weights are dependent on the map itself. So the map does have an impact on the targets per municipality. So if one of those were mixed urban and rural municipalities has a lot of area plan for growth, a lot of access to infrastructure, they have a higher target.
That's important. Thank you for adding that. So here's what that looks like in practice. Let you take that in for a second. You can, you can see the rural communities generally growing at the same rate. Um check out Westford there. The fourth column from the left shows the annual historic growth rate. Six units annually approximately in Westford going up to about eight. Uh Bolton, six going to about five to hit to hit the middle target. And then you can see our our cities are are setting their sights on the middle and upper targets, which do represent an annual increase in the number of units produced. You can see that there is quite a range and that that is what it's gonna take to get us to our our middle or upper targets for the region. I'll pause there again after the data dump. All right. I'll move on. So shifting gears a little bit here into the, the last part of our overview presentation for you. We wanted to talk a little bit about the approach that we took with different categories, how we thought it through and what that looks like. So I'm gonna do the first few of the these approach slides and then hand it back to Taylor. So the first approach has to do with rural areas. Approach, no smoothing. What is, what does that mean? When we did our mapping, we used land cover data to identify where there were agricultural areas, where there were cleared areas that were likely residential uses, where there were um areas with forest cover, other important resource, important and priority resources. Uh what we found is that it led to kind of a a blocky pattern in different rural places where there had been some ex-urban development. We considered whether to smooth those over, which is to, means to color them in with whatever was surrounding them, whether that was more um agriculture and forestry or rural conservation typically. We tried that out. We found that there wasn't a way to do that systematically across our communities. We also found that different municipalities had different opinions about the way that they wanted those rural areas represented. And let me show you an e- an example of that. This is, this is from Huntington. I'd love the laser pointer, please.
Yes.
Um thank you. So on the left here in the circled area, you can see our March twenty twenty-five map. And what what this is showing you is is rural conservation, agriculture and forestry uh based on there's, there is a forest block that goes through there that's important. And so we brought this to the town, and they said, well, this doesn't, this doesn't represent what is there. This does not represent the experience of the town or how we review it, nor does it reflect our future land use map. And so we said, well, what about this? This is the unsmoothed, the roughed version, I guess, uh where you can see that the the cleared areas are represented in the light brown, rural general. Down here, these, these rural ex-urban neighborhoods. This, i- in some cases, you've got parcels down here, and this is a road. Um that the front is cleared, but it goes back. It might be a a panicky lot, a spaghetti lot. The back of the resource or the back of the lot will still have the dark green. The front of the lot will have the cleared area. And so this is what we opted to do just as a matter of policy uh across the region. So you will see that on our map. The next thing I want to highlight is that we did end up mapping some enterprise areas adjacent to planned growth areas. And this was done to reflect local policies, existing buffers, and the intensity of different enterprise areas uses. In many cases, you know, there were, there were different reasons for this, uh variety of reasons from our municipalities for wanting to have PGAs adjacent to enterprise areas. In Burlington, it had to do with ma- maintenance of existing uses down by the Interveil, McNeil Generating Plant, but also some places that are neighborhoods that need to remain neighborhoods. This is an example from Winewski, um just north of where we are sitting. And what you see here is the, you can see the footprints of these buildings in a kind of low-intensity industrial area adjacent to to very compact neighborhoods and some some of their core areas along those corridors. And in Winewski, which has a very small land area, they wanted to try to maintain a diversity of land uses and have the opportunity for businesses and jobs in these areas. And and when I've driven up here, I need to go up there and get to the highway, do some errands. Uh I've I've seen people walking to and from this job center. So this in practice and according to the future land use map for the city is is a very functional adjacency of enterprise and PGA. And so as we thought that through and talked with them, we decided to map it that way. I I give that to you for your consideration. We mentioned the custom category for our unique and land consumptive uses, Camp Johnson Airport and the Upanama and Firing Range. That is the only custom category that we, that we chose to create. But they are. And then I do just want to say uh that we use the transition area to describe a real, a real range of contexts. And the, the definition of that area certainly allows that. And I think ends up being a very important conversation starter with with communities about those areas that aren't quite this, that aren't quite that, that that need, need some conversation. So we used it around interchange areas. We used it to identify possible future neighborhoods that are not yet connected to the infrastructure needed but could be with some planning. And then the example in this photo from, or image from South Burlington is that there are some areas that are served by sewer and water, and they're perfectly nice neighborhoods, and there could be more housing there, but they are function, they are disconnected transportation-wise, a- as you can see this neighborhood uh above the airport here. So common thread here, no surprise, uh additional planning is needed to achieve some of the local and regional goals. The orange on the map brings our focus to that um, to that project. That's transition. I'm gonna turn it back over to Taylor.
So I'm gonna talk about the neighborhoods, the PGAs, the village areas, and talk about uh centers. Um a lot of this you probably already know, but we feel like it's worth reiterating. Uh with planned growth areas, uh in Chittenden County, those, those are areas that are served by both water and wastewater. There aren't really any exceptions. Um if those areas that are served by water and wastewater are subject to the Home Act and the provisions of the Home Act whereby, you know, there has to be five units per acre allowed, and there has to be quadruplex by right. And so there's a diversity of housing types that need to happen or need to be allowed in those areas that are served by water and wastewater infrastructure. And that gets to one of the criteria uh of what a planned growth area is in statute. Um PGAs are really where we see the most infill opportunities to meet our existing housing goals. So they're, they are probably a little bit more expansive than other parts of the state. But again, that's because we have larger water and wastewater service areas than a lot of the rest of the state. Um PGAs also need to be served by either planned or existing complete streets, infrastructure, so sidewalks, multi-use paths. Um and we've done our best, you know, we have our own internal database of of that infrastructure, and we've done our best work in our municipalities to understand where that infrastructure is planned. Uh with village areas, those are areas that do need to have either water, wastewater or soils for future uh community wastewater systems accessible. Um they also need to be a walking distance to the core. I don't know why core is in statute, not center, but it says core. Um and essentially, you you'll see a lot of village areas in Colchester and Jericho, as Charlie mentioned. A lot of areas are served by water infrastructure, but not served by wastewater, so they couldn't be PGAs from our perspective. We're going, Kate, talk about centers. So we've got two slides on centers. Um so the first bullet there, uh we just want to note that we were really followed the municipal future land use maps and followed the municipal leads when defining what areas are downtown centers or village centers. We really let the municipalities choose and define for themselves what to label those areas. You know, from our perspective, statute uh doesn't come out and say you have to be a step-three center to be considered a downtown center. Um that isn't clearly stated, and so our map is really reflective of how our municipalities define themselves. Uh the next bullet point, you folks are probably well aware that there is some uh misaligned language in statute between uh forty-three, forty-eight A and uh Title twenty-four, Chapter one thirty-nine in relation to centers. Um what you see here on the flow chart is sort of our thought process when looking at what geographic areas could meet that definition of center. And so, you know, we very much, you know, were responsible for the regional future land use map. We looked at that definition of downtown and village centers in forty-three, forty-eight A. And from there, we we found alignment with the definition of downtown center and village center in uh twenty-four VSA fifty-eight oh one four. And from there, we found alignment and conformance with the description of what is a step-one center uh in twenty-four VSA fifty-eight oh three. You know, that description of step-one center doesn't have a requirement that the center be historic. And I think that's the big, the big um sticking point for some folks. Um we also want to note that it's important that, you know, for the definitions of of PGA in a village area that um that those areas be anchored by a center. And so given our, our historic growth pattern here in Chittenden County that, you know, one, this definition works and complies with statute, and we're complying with statute, but also just to comply with the village area and PGA definitions, we need some centers to anchor to. Um also want to note that, you know, there, I know some folks uh in the state are are a little worried about the implications of having additional centers as part of designation program and impacts on things like historic tax credits. We just want to make very clear that uh we only want historic tax credits to go to places that are historic. Uh the community investment board has control over that. They get to decide where those tax credits are used or not used. And so we may have centers that are not historic here in Chittenden County, but we don't want to see historic tax credits used in those places because they're not historic. Uh next slide, Kate. The next slide is just gonna show you these definitions from statute uh itself. Um wanted to document that as part of our presentation, be available for people to review, but this is where we see alignment between those three statutes. Any comments or questions on the center topic? Here and done. Uh that concludes our overview of the regional plan, uh overview of how we approached developing our future land use map. Uh and uh we're a little bit early. Surprising. So it's time for Q and A for for you folks if you have any questions on the plan or the general approach to mapping.
So I think I'll take the opportunity because we had a few people join us online after we started the meeting, just to go over a few sort of ground rules here. Is we'll take questions from the board first and then from the public. Uh we've built in a bunch of different times for public questions here. The other thing I'll note is um act250.bromont.gov is our website. If you go to it under Act one eighty-one and Regional Plan, so you can find a link to all the ECOs Plan as well as all the public comments that we've received so far, as well as your comments from sister agencies. We will not be reviewing those uh verbatim today because those are part of that follow-up record, which is online that we will be consulting. Um for those that wish to speak and ask questions today, absolutely please do, or you can also email act250 dot board. Correct? Is it act250 dot board at bromont dot gov? Your comments and uh the public comment period is through the end of business day, so please be timely with those. Uh but we're happy to receive comments or questions that way. Um any questions from the board first?
Oh, I have lots, but um a bunch of my questions.
a bunch of my questions are related to the future land use area mapping. And Sarah, are we doing a separate segment of this, uh, show specific to that? So I should fold those out.
So for our agenda, we're due for a break in a little bit and then we'll come back and we're going to be doing a virtual site visit of the county. And, uh, we will take questions from the board at each place that we stop. Um, and then questions from the public after. If you have general questions about land use mapping, now might be the time to that though.
So yeah, I have some general comments, questions about the plan and then a couple of general comments, questions about the mapping. And then a lot of sort of specific stuff that we can talk about later. Um, so one of the specific goals for regional plans is to broaden access to educational and vocational training opportunities.
Mm-hmm.
Um, to one extent, your outreach efforts are, were amazing. I was blown away by the level of engagement and, um, yeah, really proud that that's what was happening here in the county. Um, but what sorts of engagement did you do with the school district specifically? Cause the, that section of the plan is somewhat anemic, honestly. There's just a couple paragraphs that address total enrollment and how many school districts. And that's it. So what, what kind of engagement were you able to do with those folks?
Specifically in round one, we tried to engage with Winuski and Burlington Districts and were not responded to. Um, and so there was effort made. Um, but, but yeah, no, no takers. And so, you know, direct engagement with youth or with the school districts themselves, uh, the answer is none, Alex.
Yeah, I, I have some experience in local markets. I understand that, uh, conundrum. I, but I noticed there are no action items specific to education that came in the relevant chapter.
Yeah.
So that's, I don't know what the full board will say, but that's one word or another. That was one of my thoughts.
Yeah.
Maybe we could say something about the educational system, especially given the rather seismic changes that are being discussed right now. Um, and yeah, what, what's happening with the long-term decline in enrollment? I did think the comment that was made about the fact that enrollment is declining, but school age population is increasing is a really interesting point and where are those kids being educated? Uh, and so yeah, that, that was, that was, I thought that was a good, uh, uh, written value adding point.
We made a decision prior, prior, the two thousand thirteen to twenty eighteen ECO's plans both have an education chapter. And we, you know, in this iteration that went away and we merged it with, I believe our infrastructure chapter.
Right.
And just felt like we hadn't been making any progress specifically on actions and prior plans that, uh, you know, despite our best efforts, we weren't, it didn't quite maybe, uh, assess that having its own goal and chapter. And so we, we merged it in, but your, your point is well taken. But things are shifting pretty considerably at the state level related to education.
Uh, the other comment I had on, um, the specific goals or requirements, uh, is goal five under the specific goals and statutes that we could identify that that were those important natural and historic features of the Vermont State and then it gives of, of a less than four, um, that, that should be addressed. Um, I didn't see a lot on historic resources and I wonder why.
Uh, that is a good question. Um, I think what is there is we think we do call, we have an action specific to like update all the historic sites and structure surveys across our municipalities. And that is like one of my pet things that I hope we can find money to do at some point in time. Um, and from our perspective, at least that was, that was enough to meet that statutory bar in terms of conformance. Um, on the whole though, that's a good question, you know, as an RPC, we haven't been as involved perhaps as some of the more rural RPCs with, you know, helping property owners like access tax credits or things related to designation program. Um, just because, you know, we have municipal staff in most of our municipalities that, that may be helping property owners with, with those sorts of things. Um, yeah, we, I'm, I'm open ideas.
Thinking what I might interrupt the tone, but again, I can't speak for the board. Uh, is that it seems like Chitting County is, um, somewhat unique in the state in, in that the growth potential and, and necessity is high here, right? You, the plan does a good job of indicating, wow, a quarter of all the new housing in the state needs to happen in this one county. And yet, um, there's a balance, right, between, um, understanding your historic resources and respecting them and having them inform what that new development is. And it'd be great if the plan said something about that. Um.
Would it be helpful for the board, you know, to, to address that concern, Alex, that, you know, we, we highlight, you know, our, our PC's efforts to help municipalities with, with bylaws that do, you know, form-based code or, or, um, design kind of specific standards that we, that we, you know, we're, we're trying to support municipal efforts to do that kind of work that, that you're trying to.
Yeah, even a little bit of discussion about the form-based codes that at least here in Winuski and Burlington stem in part from the building fanski, you know, in history of that building and state, that might be helpful.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's a request to drop the share screen there.
Oh, it's good. Is Sarah before the room at the board?
Um, my other, uh, comment on that particular statutory goal has to do with the, um, significant scenic roads, waterways and views. There's, there's chapter fifteen, um, that addresses scenic resources and, and such. Um, doesn't talk a lot about scenic roads, um, waterways and views. And as some of you grew up here and lives here, I feel like that's a big part of what makes this such a special place is being, you know, having all the advantages of an urban area or, or an suburban area, but still having access to those um, scenic roads to drive on or ride on or, you know, the, the, that spectacular view that you get in this one spot there. It gives you the sweep of the green mountains and another spot that gives you a lane shit and playing, um. I, I acknowledge that in the plan, you talk about the deficiencies in a lot of the municipal, uh, planning regulatory documents where there's, uh, intent and good language in the plan, but not really corollary in the regulatory, uh, side of the coin. Um, but I, I, it just struck me that chapter fifteen was a little weak. Um, and couldn't say more about why this particular place, you know, is special in those ways that the statute anticipates a plan addressing.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to be responsive, but I want to look at Charlie just cause he was around in twenty thirteen, but I, you know, I think in my impression is that our board, you know, back in twenty thirteen, perhaps tried to not get that specific, maybe, uh, specifically about views. Um, because of the regulatory implications, perhaps in terms of conformance of the regional plan at Act two fifty.
Sure.
Um, and, and, you know, not, yeah, wanting to be specific enough and supportive of municipalities, but, uh, perhaps not feeling comfortable um, in the regional plan saying those things clearly, um, or specifically. I mean, kind of being disrespectful in the study. Am I, am I interpreting things wrong?
I don't remember too much conversation like that, but I do remember, you know, probably back at that point, ten years ago or more, we were actually doing some, we were investing in some of the towns, doing some of those, some of that work and getting some of their bylaws updated. So, yeah, I think that's an area we can, okay.
Uh, I think this is my last sort of general elements of the plan comment. Uh, the, the plan talks about, um, Act fifty-nine and the thirty by thirty, fifty by fifty initiative for bolstering the amount of conserved land in the state over those periods from, to twenty thirty and twenty fifty. And Melanie, maybe you can help me. I can see a map though. Like is, is there a map that shows the conserved lands from the protected lands database in Chitting County?
No, but we can show that.
Maybe it's, maybe it's in the viewer somewhere.
Yeah, it's, um, on the viewer and it's also combined with all the, um, state, local, known and possible constraints in our natural systems map. So it's just collapsed, um, into those categories, but it is a layer that informs the energy.
Gotcha.
Plan.
Yeah, that's a more gen, another sort of more general thought as I was reviewing the plan that, um, that map is super helpful. It gives you one place to look at like where the constraints are. And it's also super unhelpful because you can't pick apart particular resource areas that a viewer might be most interested in, whether it's conserved land or some other, you know, development constraint. So I know, I know there's been an evolution in the regional plan to, you know, move in the direction of these more combined maps for a variety of reasons. And you, you, you might want to, you might want to bolster that with some specific resource maps. And at least in terms of the conserved land, I think it'd be interesting. I think Charlie's point about Chitting County not being exactly what a lot of people in the state think it is, is a good one. And showing how, where the network of conserved lands is in addition to the percentage. I think it's twenty-four.
Yeah, four point nine, four point four.
And, and the state is twenty-seven, I believe. So like very comparable to the overall, uh, state level of the conserved lands. You stage can see where that work, like the patterns there that like interest study can't do it. Um, the layer maps are now, and Melanie, just a heads up, I'm guessing you already know this, but I was, I was on the map viewer this morning. And it's got a bunch of layers that won't, won't display. But it, it, so just some kind of good tidings going on with the map viewer.
I think that you were on the old ECO's plan map viewer.
Very possibly. I was, I was using the link from within the plan in the historic resources section. Cause I thought, hey, I've got a lot of historic resources. I'll just go to the map viewer and see where they are. And that.
Yeah. So, and I just noticed that link is to the old ECO's plan map viewer. Our map viewer is now on our new website. So in the next iteration.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
And it will just state that we have our own map viewer from Act two fifty, which is the future land use in tier one A B viewer, which does include a protected land status that we turn on and off. But I will note for the record that there are some discrepancies that were picked up between our data sets and your data sets specifically with infrastructure. This is noted earlier. We are endeavoring to make sure that those are up to date. Hopefully before the final application, we have some lead time, we will look into that and get that corrected.
Your explanations about why they made decisions on some of their future land use area, um, hauls was really helpful. Um, I, I, I still feel like the rural general category is being used too much. Um, and that when you have singular house sites in a sea of rural ag forests that show up as rural general, that's not land use mapping. That's, that's house mapping. And so we've seen that issue in some of the other regions as well. And I thought your point about like, we couldn't figure out a better way to do it was, was a good one. Um, wishing you figured out a better way to do it.
Yeah.
It still doesn't seem like the right way. And honestly, um, at least in the Northwest, um, regional plan, there was a lot less of that. They, so you may want to talk to them about how they figured out how to do it. Cause I think they did. And I, and I'm just concerned that as this board reviews all of the regional plans across the state, that I, I don't really want one region to have an excessive level of granularity that three other regions don't like that. It'll make it difficult to do statewide analysis.
We've had those conversations with those partner RPCs. Um, and I, I'll, I'll jump in just because I was probably the point of some of that, but was that there was also the dynamic of going into public meetings with people seeing their, um, property labeled as, you know, rural conservation. And whether like, now this is my house, like, you know, and so I think that's the struggle statewide of like, you know, the, the is versus, you know, kind of the specific versus the general. Um, I think more of the regions look like us than maybe look like Northwest. So just heads up. That's your goal. Um, but we'll look again at how Northwest was able to smooth that out. Um.
Well, and again, my, it's, to me, it's not a dichotomy. There are three world classes. So whatever that is, a trichotomy. Anyway, it's, it's, it's not the difference between rural general or rural conservation. In my mind, it's the difference between rural general and rural ag forest. And so the community that I usually work for, which is here in Chitting County is one of those community where, communities where there's a lot of rural general being mapped. And as their former planner, I look at it and say, that, that's an ag forest district. It's in, in an ag forest future range map at the municipal level. Why is it, why is it mapped as sort of a more of a rural general category when it could easily be rural ag forest? You know, Alex, that those places have plenty of houses in them.
Right.
Yeah. Well, you know, one of the things we found, Alex, is that, and you've probably seen this in zoning as well. There are a lot of agriculture districts that are, that are actually sometimes named agricultural residential.
Sure.
And so that leaves us with the, sometimes the choice between rural general and agriculture. It, it comes down to maybe an expression of values as much as what's on the ground or what should be on the ground in the future. And so those are some of the things that we're kind of grappling with and.
Yeah. And I think in, to extend that in the area as whole, you know, hangs together as a rural general, so we end. But those areas where you have a, a narrow road winding its way up into a rural ag forest area with little pink pricks of yellow along the way for each house site, it just doesn't make sense from a land use mapping, uh, standpoint and mine. Uh, so that's it. Uh, and then like all the other, all the other commissions, you have lots of slivers everywhere in the, in the mapping. And that's just an artifact of, of the process. So.
Trying to clean them.
Yeah.
Still trying to clean them.
We are at time. We're actually a little bit past time. Um, I think the one other thing I just want to say in terms of data cleanup is, uh, I think our partners at ACCD noted that we have some plans that were expiring that are noted in the Vermont Planning Data Center as being expired, which when you go to their websites of the municipalities, these are recently adopted plans. And so just an encouragement to make sure that there is municipal follow-through and make sure that Vermont Data Planning Center is updated because I think that was another easy sort of fix there.
Yeah. And the, the most up-to-date info on that should be in our tier one B memo where we, where we noted that there were some possible.
And I mean, yeah. Our partners at ACCD should have the most up-to-date data because we have to update, uh, uh, a map layer related to municipal planning grant, uh, eligibility. And that was done before the end of September. And so they should have that data.
So this is the example I can think of.
Yes.
The commentary, they said that was expired in plan.
None.
We know it's not approved. So.
Yes.
Yes, recently, very recent. So kudos to that. So we are due to take a break until, we're, we were due to take a break around the three to three fifteen. Um, I think we should still at least, at the very least, take a 10-minute break. So what I'd like to propose is coming back at three twenty. We'll go to a cold screen. What I would say too is just anything that you have to say, please come back and say it on the record. And don't catch us running to the restroom. Uh, we're more than happy to stay here and hear everything. Um, there, on that note, there are three restrooms at this way. And as well as thank you very much for, I provide some apple squares and apple cider, but the rest is actually for Cedar Chitting County Regional Day. Um, so please fill yourself with that and we'll be back at three twenty. Are you ready to put some bolt deep?
Yep.
All right. Perfect. Thank you. All right, perfect, thank you.
Right, we should still be reviewing.
All right, well, very good. I want to welcome everybody back and thank you. We're, um, back together. And I think the next thing on your agenda is to have a virtual site visit of the future land use map by CCRPC. I will note that what we're going to see in the room is the virtual site visit side by side with a slideshow. If you go to our website under act50.vermont.gov and look into the CCRPC plans submitted, we have also uploaded that there. So if people want to get that PDF to follow along, please do. Um, with that being said, I'd like to turn it back over to CCRPC.
Exhibit twenty three.
Exhibit twenty three and counting. Very good.
Thank you, Sarah. So we're going to do a virtual site visit, um, of Chitting County. I am going to drive the map. Kate is going to drive the presentation. Hopefully this works. If you have questions, please interrupt us. Feel free to ask board members. Um, this is an internal map viewer just for our staff. It has some data layers that, uh, that we can use that are not available on our public facing map viewer, um, including building envelopes. So we can see, or sorry, building footprints. We can see building footprints. We can see bike pad infrastructure, water wastewater service areas. I can just turn that on and off, um, as we move about the county. Um, we're going to talk about St. George first. All right. One second, sorry, let me get me.
I'll start talking about it.
You start talking about it and I will zoom in.
All right, welcome to St. George. Um, this is one of the places that does not previously have a designated village center, but it does have characteristics of a center, which the Act one eighty one definitions allowed us to use to give this community an opportunity that it would not have had otherwise. So this is, uh, just, we just wanted to start out off with this example of a small center, a new center in a small town that would provide access to planning resources to help improve, um, the centeredness, the compactness and the, and the function of, of this place. Where already there's an existing, existing neighborhood with affordable homes. There is a town hall, town offices rather. There is a small private wastewater system that serves multiple properties, including one or two publicly owned properties, I believe. Thank you. Um, and so what does planning look like for that, uh, when we think about the future of this small area? The center allows, allows that to be contemplated.
I'm seeing there's a little bit of lag on the map, so I will do my best to, to stay, um, quiet with my mouse. Um, the only thing I'll, I'll mention is that we have a mobile home park in the center. Uh, this might be one of the very few centers in the state that has a mobile home park in it. Um, I believe over a third of St. George residents live in that mobile home park. Um, so, um, it's going to be a, a pretty urban, pretty, pretty, uh, urban place if this becomes a center. Um, let's move on unless there's questions about St. George.
Well, just one question. I, I saw the village area to the south. There's a transition infill area to the north.
Mm-hmm.
Why? Why, why is it villager in one side and transition info the other?
My recollection is that the village area to the south, which I'll zoom back out a little bit. So there are better soils down in the south than there are in the north. Um, and you know, both the transition area and the village area, I believe in the municipal plan are within the same category or, or same subset of like a residential kind of category. But with the soils and the slower speeds on two A to the south, that's thirty five miles per hour. But actually it goes up a little bit higher to fifty above the center. You would know better than me driving that every single day for a long time.
Less than fifty. So you're not having a.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that factored into our decision making there in terms of transition versus, uh, village area.
Yeah, I'm just curious, of course, the transition areas, while still an effective way to map land use, do not have the advantage of, of potential, um, tier one D status ongoing in the future.
Kirsten, go ahead.
I had a thing to, thank you.
No, no, I was going to move on.
So this isn't necessarily specific to St. George, but maybe as we go through the towns that have mapped village areas, could you touch on the walkability and how that was evaluated?
Sure.
I'm particularly interested to know if there was a specific distance factor that was considered.
Mm-hmm. Uh, there was not, but we did factor in the existence of, of infrastructure. But I can bring up the, the sidewalk and bike pad infrastructure layer to kind of demonstrate how those village areas are connected to suburbs as we go along.
So I had one thing, um, uh, St. George, which was that the, um, mobile home park is included within the village. This is new village area, but the zoning code is actually rural zone. And so that might be good to have some additional information as to when you're looking at creating one of these new village areas and you look at the underlying zoning as to what's being included, what's not. Um, that was something that might benefit from collaboration.
Okay. Yeah, it's always been tough with all these municipalities when we're looking mostly at the municipal plan, their future land use map and their zoning and they're totally alone. Um, and so in those circumstances, we've, you know, we're working with the municipality to make it, make it, but I, I hear you, Sarah. We will look at that.
Anything else on St. George?
Yeah, uh, Sarah? Sarah?
Oh, Jenna.
Hi. I'm sorry, I came late. Um, and maybe I missed a little bit, um, in the earlier portion of the meeting when, um, you were describing your methods perhaps. Um, but I also wonder, in, in addition to what, uh, Kirsten and, um, Sarah talked about in terms of zoning and sidewalk infrastructure, I'm also wondering how you decided to, uh, you know, how you decided on the boundary that you decided on? And, and how does that relate to those other underlying, uh, considerations? And, and also in terms of, um, parcel, whether you snapped to parcel, for instance? So as you're going through these, as if, if you can sort of address those, um, questions in a summary fashion, that would be great.
I, I will say overall that if we can snap to parcels, we're snapping to parcels. Um, if there's a circumstance where a parcel is divided by a sewer service area, we would snap to the sewer service area or to the water service area. As in we would keep the area served as a village area or PGA, the area not served as some probably some kind of rural category or transition category. Um, as a general response to that, Janet, I can try to be more detailed area by area.
You know, not too much detail, just a little.
Yeah, I'm also worried about time. Uh, here in St. George, I mean, we, we would, we would snap to parcel and we would generally follow along with, with their municipal future land use map and their town plan.
Okay.
Right, I'm going to zoom out and we're going to move to Fort Ethan Allen in Colchester.
So this is another newly mapped center, but it is mapped around a very historic place, um, Fort Ethan Allen. And this has a, you, you can see the aerial now that Taylor has pulled the map up. It's a compact pattern with lots of historic buildings. There's a mix of housing types, um, and housing affordability levels. Um, Champlain Housing Trust just opened tent cavalry there, uh, which is a new afforded, permanently affordable, um, housing development. Uh, on the right in the slide, uh, for those following along at home, hopefully you have the PDF of the slide presentation up. And if so, the title is site visit, that's in Colchester, Fort Ethan Allen. On the right of that is the National Register of Historic Places Boundary. Um, this, this is a national register site. And on the left is kind of a fun old postcard, but it looks just like that today.
Just in, interesting fact that, you know, this very historic place was not a part of the prior designation programs. Um, why I couldn't really explain to you. So this could really benefit this, both of these municipalities, this place by being a part of the, the designation programs. Uh, I do want to note there's a lot of wastewater challenges here too. Um, specifically with, with, I know in Colchester, um, so additional investment here is very important. Um, I want to note the mix of uses that exist here. Uh, some of those uses are kind of back in some of the, the nonhistoric portion behind the gold fork. Sorry, my mouse is, is lagging a ton. Um, and lastly, you know, Kate mentioned that CHT has a lot of, uh, affordable, potentially affordable rental units. I also want to note that there's a lot of CHT shared equity homeownership units too, also in this area. Um, and those folks, um, or those property owners would have access to benefits of the designation program through, uh, being included as a center. Can we move on?
Any comment about Colchester's non-tier one B opt-in position? Is that in the process or is that a decision made?
It is a, it is, uh, a municipality's decision, as you know. Um, we provided information inside of Colchester. And we have given our municipalities until, uh, March eighteenth to make a decision about opting in or not. Um, we did that because we want to be transparent to the board and to, well, everyone about what municipalities are opting in when we wore our second public hearing. Um, in, in Colchester, uh, I, yeah, I'm not sure where they're going to go next. We've offered support and to be a part of this conversation. So I don't know if Charlie or Kate have anything to add.
But what I would add is that. But what I would add is that Colchester is one of a handful of towns that was getting ready to start its municipal plan update just after we were wrapping up the. The future land use map. And so I know in many, in many communities, you know, Huntington and others. There are local conversations about land use that could inform an ultimate decision to be part of tier one B or not. And being able to have those conversations in the context of the municipal plan update. In addition to or instead of the regional plan update, I think is some a helpful thing for towns and the time that they need to take.
Conversation ongoing.
Conversation ongoing. I think same for Essex too, while we're at it.
I was going to ask.
Kirsten, Bert. And is Janet, Janice. Janet, did you have anything on Colchester?
Nope.
All right. Kirsten.
I guess I'm just noting and asking if you have any comment concerning the extent of the village areas proposed for Colchester in terms of the. Walkability element. Some of it's it's large, frankly.
So let me ask you just a procedural. You're going to be skipping to the different villages.
I'm just going to use one example.
Are you going to come back to the village areas or would you rather have our questions on village areas? That's why we're having villages.
Village areas now is fine. Yeah, totally fine.
Well, you're, yeah, you're asking about Colchester. I just didn't know if you wanted to touch on that.
So I've zoomed out to to show all of Colchester now. And you'll see in Colchester that we have several new village centers in addition to the Fort Ethan Allen. Actually, we have one legacy center here in the old Colchester village. This, it is expanded from its current boundaries. We have another new villager on the town office. We have another new village on West Lake Shore Drive, kind of by Dick Madison's General Store. And then we have another village center around what's called Warner's Corners. I grew up around here. No one calls it that. But this is, this is around Porter's Point Road, Prim Road, Hybert Route 127. Kirsten, what I've turned on here is our bike pad infrastructures layer. There may, there may be errors. This is our best effort at kind of collecting information about where sidewalks and bike paths exist. What you'll see in the white specifically are the locations of sidewalks. And so if you look at Warner's Corners, for example. We have pretty good sidewalk connectivity from Warner's Corners in all four directions. We actually have sidewalk connectivity all the way out to Airport Park and pass. Over to what is the Burlington Bike Path that comes over the bridge from the New York River. And so, you know, this is just one example, but. You know, we could half mile buffer off of of this one particular layer here and we'd probably be about halfway down Porter's Point Road. And so. Are we getting a little bit beyond, you know, the strict definition of walkability perhaps? But there is connectivity via via sidewalk in this location, for example. You know, Colchester has a lot of sidewalks or bike paths that are planned in this capital improvement plan. And they're not shown on here, not factored in here, but we can provide more information to the board if needed. Kate?
Nothing to add on connectivity. I do want to note that the historic Colchester Village Center isn't a legacy center. It's not participating in the downtown program right now. Yeah, just peaking on the planning atlas and not.
Surprising to me, actually.
And so that, that's another one where. It's it's going to get the benefits because it has the characteristics. What I would add about the, the, the multiple villages in Colchester is. That the, you know, we really got a lot of nodding of heads in the town of Colchester when we talked about these as nodes, as functional spaces that people gather. Go to, whether it's because of parks or a general store, or it's in daily services that they might need down in Warner's Corners, drive and movie theater, but whatever one might need. For daily life, but the community really kind of saw these as as nodes, maybe not. And and villages, again, this is a future land use map, so thinking ahead about where additional services could be located that would serve the. The pretty vast neighborhoods in in Colchester and anchor those. So that, you know, over time, hopefully some gentle infill could could lead to more housing in this community.
These, you know, these village areas are all served by water infrastructure as well.
I had sort of the opposite thought about the, the, the two sort of Mallett's Bay-ish. Village centers and the fact that as somebody who drives through there all the time. It feels like one place to me. It doesn't feel like two different village centers. And I see people walking because it's the large ones. Especially in the summertime. To me, it's, it's sort of Mallett's Bay is one place. It's one village center. And and what I look at this, I thought, well, that's not involved. Why do you have such a tiny little village center near the town office? And another one held by the town itself. Maybe, maybe they could be collapsed into just one larger village center, but.
We kind of went back and.
We went back. We had a lot of conversations about that exactly with Colchester, Alex.
Too much local knowledge, yeah.
Well, I, I think that was a larger. Comment on some of the mapping overall. I think this is a good area to show is. I think the proportions is what you're getting into in terms of village area to village is, I think some of the questions in terms of. This is central Chitting County. These are the municipalities that are lying upon for your housing targets. Why not increase the size of your village areas in relation to, or village centers in relation to the village areas? It just, there's a lot of existing development that might be best encapsulated by a village center and meaning through. The definitions provided in the VACTA criteria. It would seem that some of these areas could be reexamined to be larger village centers. Which would then help in terms of that relation to walkability of the core to the village area and that sort of quarter mile to half mile. Which were in the VACTA guidelines. Let me just what the relative distances between different nodes.
I wish I had a measuring tool here. I do not. I could go to the NR atlas real quick and do measure.
So do you have sparkling on ours?
You have one in your state.
So we have one on ours and I think it measured that. I think it's about a mile.
There's two goes and three that's probably by the bottom.
Sorry, two thousand feet down here at the bottom. So if we're talking on Prim Road, I would say about six thousand feet, a little over a mile. Or maybe a little bit less if you were measuring from the edge of the village center here. A half mile.
Yeah, that's about a mile and sixty-four eighty feet. So that's, that's about a mile between each.
Okay. Is that what you're measuring now?
Yeah.
Anything else on Colchester? We're going to move on Jericho, a pretty similar municipality in that it has water service, but does not have wastewater service as of right now. Jericho has three historic villages that are all participating in the designation program. Now we have Jericho Corners. We have the Riverside Undergo Flats and then we have Jericho Center. All three have map village centers that are really grounded in the municipal plan itself. You'll see quite a village, village area around, particularly in between Jericho Corners and Undergo Flats, Riverside. These are areas that, you know, are in future land use planning areas municipally and in zoning districts that. Support residential development and have access to to water infrastructure.
And I'll interrupt you for a sec to say that for comparison on the, in the PDF that we see on the right here, you're looking at the Jericho Future Land Use Map and yellow is. Presidential infill, red and pink are village core and village neighborhoods. So as you kind of look between the two of them, you can see why. How they line up with the future land use.
And so you can see that, you know, we have some transition areas, notably this one here by the high school. Where municipally they're, they've put that in village neighborhood, but we've had it as transition because it doesn't have water service right now. So it's kind of a signal to to say, hey, you don't have infrastructure now. You're planning for this locally. Perhaps you need to do more work in terms of planning for infrastructure. Maybe this could be a village area in the future, but more work needs to be done.
Kirsten, your, your questions about. The breadth of the village areas and the distance from the village centers and the walkability, I think is. Relevant in this case because the Route fifteen corridor is not a pedestrian friendly corridor. And although the map shows a bright green, which is, you know, like a bike route. You know, that's, that's a fifty mile an hour, two ring road without a dedicated bike, you know, facility on one side.
Correct.
So I, I just, I just sort of call that out for your benefit, Kirsten. I, I actually am more. On, on the wavelength of Sarah that like this is Jalen County and. And for lack of a better way of putting it, like, we need to pack people in here. And so I'm, I'm not. As worried about village areas that are not formally connected to village centers via sidewalk system existing. But I think Kirsten's point is still worth thinking about. This one, to my mind, again, and somebody who drives around there a lot. It's not super friendly to a bike pad use. Along that Route fifteen corridor anyways.
Any other questions on Jericho?
I do want to mention that Jericho has been doing a lot of scoping and construction even of of sidewalks and multi-use paths. So there's. Pretty active conversations about active transportation.
And about wastewater too. They are currently doing a plumber engineering report. For a wastewater, community-based wastewater system to serve that Riverside. Riverside area. Where are we going next? We are going to the village center in South Burlington at the corner of Kennedy and Kimball Avenue.
While you get us there, I'll just share that what you're looking at here is a rendering, though part of this neighborhood has been built. It's a combination of single family homes. Multi-story apartment buildings. I believe there's some duplexes in there and this, this is the vision, but lots of it has been built already. And then that polygon is a very approximate approximation of future development that is planned. That is mixed use development. Complementing the residential development that is there.
Would you orient us to screen one, screen two?
Spun around here a little bit.
Dear, yes.
And so.
Yeah, we've got.
On the presentation slide, you can see Kennedy Drive labeled there. And so this is Kennedy Drive. You look at my screen real quick.
That's Old Farm Road.
And then we have Old Farm Road right here that kind of goes up the middle. And it's kind of connecting to all the residential level in the back, some of which has already been constructed. And so this area here, as Kate mentioned, we're going to show you on the next slide, a conceptual rendering of what may be built here, but we're talking two to five story buildings. You know, that are mixed use on Kimball Ave. Built form looks pretty downtown like. And this is, you know, one of those nodes that South Burlington is planning for.
How many stories are in the buildings on Kennedy?
Directly on Kennedy Drive.
The ones that are just above the.
Yeah, sure. I believe those are five story buildings, multifamily. You know, Kennedy Drive is pretty boulevard-y and pretty screened on the road. So there's, there are trees, I believe, in between Kennedy Drive and those, those structures. But the, the point of the ones on Kimball Ave is to be much more mixed use, much more foreign to the street. And more of a traditional village or downtown center kind of field to the streetscape. Want to show the next slide, Kate? Also, so this is.
Another reorientation, but closer to, closer to the one on the street. Yeah.
This shows just a conceptual build out of what this may look like in the future. Again, you have two to five story structures. With some examples of what they may look like. Generally oriented street, there's some in parking lots, generally oriented street, bike pad infrastructure served in the area.
So this one requires us to have a little bit of a leap of faith. Doesn't, right now, look anything like a village center to my mind, right? Doesn't have a mix of civic assets and. Commercial destinations that would drive that designation. But the reason it's being shown as a node is a village center is because of what's planned, what's hap, what's happening on that Kimball Avenue end of the bridge.
I say yes and, you know, at least the subdivision of those lots, those lot sizes have been permitted either locally and or through Act fifty. And so we, we do have, you know, some control of the built form in terms of lot size, but you're right, Alex, there is a bit of a leap of faith.
Well, I, I think then looking at the definition of the village center. And you're looking at within this area about twenty-five parcels roughly. And I, I think what would be helpful is additional information like what you're providing. To help guide because. On right now, with the information that we were provided through the application, there's a lack of historic sites, a traditional center or civic amenities. These are things that are in that definition of a. Village center. And so that sort of southern edge of Port Farm Road is that area with those lots that you were highlighting. That might be helpful to talk about that specifically in those, in terms of those buckets that perhaps need to be filled in.
In terms of where we talk about that, Sarah, would you like that in the application, in the plan, or supplemental information to provide as a part of reapplication?
I think we'll provide you with comments, you know, from all of us that will help guide you as to the level of importance and where maybe to address it.
Excellent.
As far as the reapplication.
We're still figuring that out. We're deciding how to respond to the application.
So Janet has her hand up, but Kirsten, did you have?
No, I'm sure she can tap her, but Janet.
It's really hard to put these two images together, especially on a single screen, but. The, what I'm seeing on the map viewer, there's, it looks like. Some larger structures in the purple that is being proposed for village center. Yeah. Are those mixed use?
It's a good mix of uses. And so in this structure here, we actually have a formal. Formerly commercial building that's actually undergone a renovation to become purely restated. You know, in response to the housing crisis we have here. The other structures, to my knowledge, are commercial structures. This is actually CCRPC's old office once upon a time. But yeah, we have a mix of uses, but not mixes of uses within one structure, Janet.
Okay, thank you.
The structure here, for what it's worth, I believe is three or four stories tall. This one is three stories tall, so we have some height here as well. Ready to move on? All right, we're going to move to Shelburne.
I think we alluded to this a little bit earlier, but here you will see some village centers along Route seven. These are new centers, again, nodes. Really in in line with some recent planning and zoning work in Shelburne. These create some differentiation along the Route seven corridor. We've seen that be seen in other parts of the corridor. And it helps anchor the, the neighborhoods that are off of Shelburne Road. That again, could, could become. Locations for more infill housing opportunity.
Want to talk about a couple of things overall with Shelburne and then going to go node by node down Shelburne Road. I just wanted to provide context that right now Shelburne is in the midst and actually almost over the finish line on a very substantial bylaw update that was funded through a bylaw modernization grant. Hopefully that gets adopted this month. If not, it's going to be in January. The town is also updated sewer service area recently and the town is going to do a very. Strategic town plan update in the next few months, plans to, to make sure we have alignment between the bylaws and the plan. It will bylaw before the plan here, so we're going to get full alignment and that'll make our lives a little easier in terms of boundaries. We'll talk more about that when we talk about a transition area in Shelburne later. And I just, I want to say that, you know, all these moving parts kind of underscores. The need for a lot of coordination between the municipalities and the region. Like they're doing their best to do good planning work and we want to be as responsive as we can and sometimes that can get a little hectic. In terms of this northern node, you'll see that our northern node is a little bit smaller here on this map than what Shelburne is planning for on this proposed zoning map you see on the left here. The reasons behind that is that, you know, we really wanted to make sure that we had a mix of uses and we felt really good about that. And solid about that on our map. So there, our, our node is a little bit smaller. I do want to note though, that there is a project that's been permitted here that is mixed use, that is sixty-three homes, it's a comeback property. It's this larger property here. So that, there was actually a settlement, but that project is permitted. We have sidewalks on both sides of the road here. We have bike lanes on Route seven. We have access to public transit. But all this node and all the nodes here were all within the interim Act fifty transit buffer area. There are a few structures to the south of this node that are historic, that are on the state register, but not in the node themselves. Um, there are a few structures to the south of this node that are historic, that are on the state register, but not in the node themselves. Um, speaking of just adjacent to the node, um, I do want to note that this property down here is Bay Ridge. Uh, you'll see a picture over here on the right, which is a a recent Champlain Housing Trust uh development, ninety-four professionally affordable homes uh at that site.
Question?
Yes.
So you refer to existing historic structures that are adjacent to the node, but the node, I think, I think was your turn to the Village Center.
Yes.
So why were those not included in the Village Center? Why did, why was the Village Center not matched to include those historic structures?
Sure, those historic structures are are down here, a little south of of the node, you know. From our perspective, um we wanted to not get too linear with with any of our centers. Um, we wanted to include areas that we felt really good about in terms of them them being permitted, at least at some level. Some permitted uh kind of development that was gonna be mixed-use and meet the definition of Village Center. Um, and so, yeah, those are the reasons why we stuck to a more tight center here. We didn't expand it down down Shel- or Shelburne Road.
I think I had some of the same comments here in terms of you had very tight uh village areas and a very expansive planned growth area. And it might be beneficial to would to expand the Village Centers for that proportionality reasons. And also, I think you just highlighted some of those in terms of the historic sites. This is an area served by transit. There have been some major increases in terms of walkability within this area too. Um, so that might just help in terms of the proportionality, because there is a very expansive planned growth area, which is has really been times more than a mile from these Village Centers.
Yeah, and I I get the desire to have nodes and to help provide centers uh for the fine rural area and be done or dealt with. Um, but yeah, this one bothers me. It's so small, it's somewhat inconsequential. Um, used to work in one of the the buildings there. It's it's uh it's a it's a retail plaza. Um, doesn't seem to fit what a Village Center is by statute or my conception of what what that is. But just initial thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I hear you, Alex, and it's, you know, kind of comes back to our our, you know, interpretation of centers and the nonhistoric requirement and for step-one centers, um, and there being a low barrier, but, but yeah, I hear you.
Janet?
I just want to reiterate, I think that one is too constrained. And if there are historic structures, I think they should be in it, and why not put in that new um Champlain Housing, you know, uh trust uh the uh development. Um, I I would encourage you to expand that one, double it or something.
Kirsten, what I'll, what I will say out loud to your question as well, though, given my lifebuster response, is that this is also, you know, as I mentioned before, us trying to coordinate in real time as the municipality is making its own decisions. And so, you know, we finalize this, well, it finalized the map, but we had, we had a draft map in March, and a lot has changed at the municipal level since March. And so we're, sometimes we're trying to play catch-up. And so we'll we'll take the feedback we heard today and think about expanding that set.
Yeah, and I'm I'm myself, as a single board member, not necessarily focused on like looking to expand, I'm just trying to see does it need what I think our interpretation of statutory definition is, what's explicitly calls for. It's it's a historic area, and so just, it was curious to see, okay, well, there's the Jason Star buildings that were emitted from the proposed now, those areas. Thank you for all the explanation.
No problem. We've moved down to the middle node, which is uh another new Village Center here. For those familiar with this area, this would be the the Rice Lumber Property. So we have Rice Lumber up here on top of the hill. It's in transition. But uh down here on Shelburne Road, um, we have an historic plaza here, Alex. Uh, we we uh with a mix of uses, um, we have a mix of residential, commercial uses along the corridor itself. Um, there is an historic structure, the Dutch Mill, uh an old motel here uh on the avenue or on Shelburne itself. Uh, on this parcel, we do not have a fully permitted, but we have a planned grocery store. Um, and the parcel behind it is municipally owned, and this is a fire station in the future. Um, we have sidewalks, uh we have bike lanes, we have access to public transit, we have water and wastewater. Um, we have a lot of good things planned for this area. Any questions about this middle center?
Just the same comment, it's a little bit of a leap of faith, you know, as what's happening. I wasn't aware that there was some potential fire station there or grocery store, so that's good news. Um, but it doesn't change the fact of what that central Shelburne Road is, which is not a place for people to congregate. It's a, it's a high-traffic road that taking life in your hands if you want to cross it as a ministry.
It's it's been a really interesting tension for us internally and in conversation with our municipalities to 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 walk the line between what's there today, what it feels like, which is, you know, dangerous for walking, and what it could be in the future with some planning. Um, so we want to re- respect reality and pragmatism and also help help the towns to be future-oriented. The future land use map, and I think you're seeing some of that tension here.
I I totally get it. I'll I'll be honest with you, a lot of me, you looked at this and wondered why most of that Shelburne Road wasn't transitioned. It seems like poster child for that designation. But I hear what you're saying about trying to create nodes and respecting future development plan and um, and municipal's future, you know, plans as well, so that all makes sense.
Thank you.
Yes, tough. We're gonna state highway. You know, it's near enough for it to listen to all our regions to the state. It's tough, and we have state highway. Um, you know, I'd be traced, did a really good job here, trying to make it a complete street, but it just doesn't change the fact that you've got ten thousand cars a day going through here. Um, all right, moving on to the historic uh Villa uh Village Center, which is now gonna be a downtown center. Um, this is Shelburne's historic uh center. Uh, we have Shelburne Museum included. Um, zoom in a little bit. Uh, we have the Shelburne kind of offices, the existing fire station, library, um, et cetera, municipal ball fields, and a whole mix of uses. Uh, we actually even have a mobile home park here as well in this sector. Um, I was wrong, there are, there are more than one mobile home park in the center here, it shouldn't count. We have all the things we have before. We have water, wastewater, we have bike pad infrastructure, we have access to public transit. Uh, any questions on on this center?
There's one parcel that went, we've done the other side of Osipkra, which would seem to be a nice, a nice part of Edge Tour. Was there a reason?
Uh, the reason, I believe, is uh municipal future land use map. Um, and I I I do think that uh, we might have thought about this parcel differently if the mapping methodology was different, Sarah. So this this parcel is owned by Meach Cove, which is uh actually owns all this land way over here too. It's all in current use, uh even though it's in the water sewer service area. And so, um, from the methodology, we had it included as Real Act Forestry. But municipally, they're actually planning for this to to be something more than that. Um, and so if and when that 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 zoning gets adopted, if and when that municipal plan gets approved, that shows us as, you know, a Village Center or zoning district or something like that, we might upgrade this whole stretch here of Osipkra, Sarah. Um, so it's more than just a little, a little parcel.
So why doesn't the downtown area include uh the school, the post office? Um, why isn't it bigger? And and why does it include Shelburne Museum? Uh, it seems like Shelburne Museum is maybe a real oddity. It doesn't belong in the category at all, but I first looked at it and thought, well, that seems like a resource-based rec, you know, facility of sorts. But less about Shelburne Museum, more like, why why wouldn't the downtown extend over into the school and extend? Um, you know, further down uh to the south along that that road, whose, whose name, whose name. Um, is it a zoning issue? Is it, is it a future land use map? I mean, we're 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 trying to mimic their future land use map.
And their existing, existing but now expanded designation through the legacy state designation program. So we started with mapping the existing the 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 legacy Village Center designation, which the community was working to expand into a downtown and including uh Shelburne Museum. We followed that lead. That expansion didn't include the the school for the post office.
Yeah, just Shelburne's such a wonderful downtown area, and it's gonna get bigger, and it just seems like those are any of those pieces to it. Both the school and the Shelburne Field House, which is a mecca for uh indoor recreation in this county. And it is the the place for indoor recreation besides the Champlain Valley Exposition. Um, anyway.
Want to move on to uh Williston, and we're gonna look at task corners. Okay. Okay, we're about, okay. All right, so we're gonna move, try to move a little bit quicker, um even though I have a lot to say about this one. Uh, so this is task corners. Um, this is mapped as a downtown center. Um, this, the boundaries of this downtown center uh mimic uh the future land use map and zoning in Williston that identifies this as their Form Based Code District. Um, Williston underwent a release of substantial comprehensive uh planning process for this area in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. whereby they adopted this vision plan, and it had a lot of 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 public engagement related to it, um and then enough Form Based Code. Um, it's third highly regulating uh building form now. Structures have to be oriented on the street. Um, and I'll zoom in a little bit more. If you go ahead. Sure, yeah, I should totally shrink that pop-out. Thank you. Um, you can see there's not a lot of grid network here, right? And if you look at the map on Kate's screen, there's a lot of grid network plants. Um, you know, that southwest quadrant. And so that whole grid network that was identified as a part of that vision plan, as part of the Form Based Code, has been adopted as a part of the official map at the local level. So the municipality is is committing the best they can to actually building out that roadway network. Um, all four quadrants are planned to be connected via bike pad infrastructure, um either cycle tracks that are protected bike lanes or via sidewalk, depending on the road context. Um, that's all been uh planned out. Uh, the municipality owns a piece of land over here by Shaws. Um, they've actually done some planning work with us to make that a multi-nobility hub, so essentially a a bus station and more in the future. Um, the town continues to monitor the Form Based Code itself. They're working with a consultant actually this spring to make tweaks. Uh, there's been some uh substantial redevelopment over in the northeast or construction in the northeast quadrant over the last two years while they have this code in place. Um, so they're they're planning on making a few tweaks. The town's also studying TIF for this area in order to build all this infrastructure. Um, they're also kind of planning on a smaller scale, perhaps using the CHIP program and cooperating with some property owners on housing development. Water capacity issues long-term. Uh, the town is gonna work with surrounding municipalities to try to address that issue. Stormwater treatment um is also an issue, and for some money. Um, I do want to address one DHTD comment, which was uh questions about uh this southern boundary along Marshall Avenue. They asked, why is it a hundred and fifty feet off Marshall Avenue? It goes through buildings. Well, there's, there's, that's a, that's a decision Wilson made on purpose. And so the the Wilson made this decision because they wanted all of Marshall Avenue surrounded by the Form Based Code District, because they want Marshall Avenue to be an urban street in the future, and they want new structures that are built on Marshall Avenue to be on Marshall Avenue up against the street. Um, this, the Form Based Code also has um block length standards. So there, the the town is aiming to have blocks that are about three hundred or three hundred and fifty feet um in terms of length. A hundred and fifty feet is about half of that, and so they're planning, and sorry, a lot of the, this area is supposed to be served by alleys. So they wanted to go a hundred and fifty feet deep. They would have an alley come in to serve that new new structure that would go up on Marshall Avenue, so there is a purpose. I'm talking too much about Williston. I I relate, you know, I worked on this project, so I I it's close to my heart. Um, any other questions on?
Yes.
Williston, yes.
I mean, maybe it's a question for Williston, but why not extend it three hundred and fifty feet? And or or include those entire parcels there instead of bisecting those parcels, but you don't need to answer that. Just, it's a consideration.
Yeah, Janet, my answer will be that, yeah, there there is one major landowner in this area, and that was a decision that the town made in cooperation with that landowner about what land would be in and what land would be out.
I think just another um comment is, it appears that the Legacy Village Center is not fully included in the proposed downtown. Which the guidance says that you should whenever possible. Is that also a local decision?
That's a local decision. They want to keep the land to the south of that one hundred feet off Marshall Avenue out of the center and in planned growth area.
And then I think this is the same um as some of the other areas, which is you have um sort of a constrained village area, constraints uh downtown and a very expansive planned growth area.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that goes well beyond a mile out. Um, and perhaps could use a better access to the centers.
Yeah, you know, so, you know, that served area is, that PGA area is all served by water and wastewater. That's been for a very long time. Um, you'll see here, uh a lot of that area is served by sidewalks and is connected bike pad wise to those centers. Um, but we can try to provide a clearer nexus and there are reasoning why that entire area is planned growth area.
I had a non-growth area question for you, Lee Williston. Um, whenever I drive on Marshall Avenue, Shumpike to the west of the proposed downtown center, um, it feels very intimidating.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, big UPS facilities and and yet it's just, it's just planned growth area. Was there some discussion about an enterprise district or future land use area in that part of this town?
There was, you know, but I, you know, kind of, it came back to, you know, the conversation Kate brought up earlier of like adjacency and whether or not adjacency of enterprise to PGA is okay or not.
I know, you're gonna do it in Wuski.
Yeah.
Like, I think maybe you should do it consistently in Williston too.
Well, if that was included in the previous, I'm sorry, is the industrial area you're talking about in in a PGA or in this, in the center that we're talking about?
It's in the PGA.
Okay. Draw my comment.
Yeah, I I Alex, I hear you, and that's kind of where we, you know, we've been somewhat deferential to, you know, what the municipality expressed for their preference.
Sure. Got it, Tom, sir.
No, we have, we have Form Based Codes in Burlington, uh South Burlington, uh Wuski, Williston, uh Jericho, Westford. And then we have some municipalities that have some design standards. You'll see Milton in a second. I don't think Heinsberg has any, that Heinsberg does too. Like some, some like design standards, you know, so there's, there's, yeah. There's quite a few.
We've been funding zoning updates for the last ten, fifteen years, which a lot of them have been Form Based Codes.
And Brooke, starting to be more specific to you, like, those are all for village areas or for urban areas. You know, the rural areas remain kind of traditional zoning, but it's just for those that's more of a places.
Yeah, this is an issue that came up repeatedly in the appeals study.
Hmm.
Really outside of the scope, outside our resources. Curious in terms of how much has been accomplished in every regard. The interest, I know we're.
We're tight.
We're.
We're tight. Do you want to free eyes a little bit?
We don't want to do. We've got this, this.
I heard of it. I'm gonna do really quick with Essex and Milton. Uh, so here we have uh Essex and Milton. Uh, we have a downtown center, and then we have a Village Center. Uh, the Village Center actually just got in the Legacy Destination Program as of like a few months ago. And we have a downtown center. Uh, this downtown center is a place where the town did the ETC Essex Town Center next plan in twenty twenty. That led to some actions you can see on the screen here in terms of trying to pursue Newtown Center. They didn't get around to it. They had a lot of things happen in Essex recently, separation, Amazon, women's prison. A lot of things that that drew their attention away from Newtown Center application. Um, but what they did do after separation is they just did some additional planning work specifically for these parcels on the north side of fifteen. Um, which Kate's showing in the outline over here. Um, municipality bought those parcels, did some additional planning for uh some mixed-use development there, but also for a new municipal building, uh fire station, library, et cetera. Um, they've also received an MRC grant to do some additional water, wastewater uh work here. Wastewater constraints in the future, if they are relying on Essex Junction for wastewater capacity. Um, we try to address that, that that problem to Williston as well through a regional wastewater study in the future. Um, we have some, some significant wastewater challenges in the future in the county. Uh, any questions on Essex?
I think that the downtown area is that's proposed is not a traditional or historic central business district designed for the historic sites. There is, I think, the post office within that area.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so I I I think it was just sort of interesting that you had a legacy village. Um, and so I I I think it was just sort of interesting that you had a legacy village area.
Mm-hmm.
And in some ways, when you're reading through the future land use guidance, it's, would they be better footed? Um, and to have the downtown where the historic villages and then have the this be a village instead. I'm guessing that that also came down to local preferences.
Yes.
You know, it's very similar to the Williston examples there, you know, the difference between historic village Williston and the downtown area being still around task corners. This is not as far along as that in terms of the newness, but it's definitely moving in that direction. This is the center of Essex Town going forward.
Right, the unfortunate thing is they didn't get the new town center. They are the legacy. Um, Williston has the legacy growth center. Um, so just reading the future land use mapping methodology. Um, this is a bit of an odd one now.
Hmm.
Or do you know?
In the last time, I'm gonna move quick. I'm gonna move to Milton. Um, I'm trying not to talk too much about this one, too, because I used to work in Milton. Uh, they, we did recently a downtown core master plan uh in Milton uh shown on the screen right there in the middle. Um, Milton's planning for mixed uses here, tons of wastewater capacity and a bunch of sidewalk connection, uh, plenty of water capacity. Um, that master plan uh plans to accommodate five hundred, six hundred new homes within this downtown center area. Um. They're also pretty far along in terms of some roadway improvements when in cooperation with E-Trans. Uh, they also have a new town-owned parcel that we're currently funding. CCRPC is funding some additional site plan work there for uh probably mixed-use building. There are challenges at stormwater treatment in the area. There is um public transit service as of right now in this area. Um, and I'll just now, I'll place there on the upper part of the screen. That's a thirty-unit senior housing complex that was built by Cathedral Square a few years ago. Um, it's kind of shows you kind of the the direction this area is going in. Um, traditionally, a lot of one-story uh single-use structures. Um, the town's planning for a pretty significant transition, already allows for five-story structures in this area. Any quick questions on Milton? Uh, yeah, yeah, you can talk about Burlington.
Here we are in Burlington. This is again a rendering, but um there's a lot that is built out here at this development called Cambrian Rise, midway between what you think of as the downtown and the New North End. And as we were looking at this, it really functions like a center because of its denser form, eventual mix of uses and multimodal connections. So uh, didn't feel like a PGA by itself made sense here. It felt heavier duty and therefore a center. So we made it a downtown downtown center in consultation with the city of Burlington.
Yeah, water sewer, public transit on the bike path, nine hundred and fifty units permanent.
Yeah, mix, mix of, mixed uses for affordable homeownership, uh, shared equity homes, rental and penthouses. So then um heading south into.
What other, other than residential, what mix of uses are there there?
There's a mix of uses planned, contemplated, not manifested yet. The the original plan had some uh first-story retail, um, space created and.
There's some that's permanent right now. It's vacant, has been vacant since it's been open.
Yeah, and this opened, I, you know, within the last five or six years, so it it kind of crashed into the COVID nest of it all, too. So um, mixed abuses until we hear otherwise.
The structure uh on the bottom of the screen with the solar panels on top, there, I believe there is commercial space permanent in that structure. Um, at least conceptually, but your staff could tell, tell us more definitively, I'm sure.
Honestly, this looks to me like a big, a large development out of, out of, out of downtown, on our other downtown areas in the city. Um, to my mind, the Old North End is more of a downtown center. And this singular development on, on that, but that's my take as one for.
Noted, thank you. You may have a similar comment here, Alex, um, and others, but this is um, this is in the south end of Burlington, about Pine Street. And you may know where the EIC used to be located. Uh, you may know where the Champlain College Building is. It's it's this zone. And there have been recent zoning changes, planned investment, pre-development agreement between the city and the property owners of this site site with a vision to create housing, commercial space, artist maker spaces, childcare at a downtown scale and mix of uses. This is contemplated for about fourteen hundred units. Um, and it is connected to a lot of things you are familiar with in this area. There's Cowhan Park there, neighborhoods, there are a number of businesses, banks, coffee shops, et cetera nearby. So this, this is a future land use, definitely, definitely a node, definitely a more intense core, and so we labeled it as a downtown center in consultation with the city.
Any thoughts about just expanding the traditional Burlington downtown area to just connect with this? Do you have a Pine Street corridor or four?
Well, I think.
That it's too, too far apart and can't be walked much.
I think we were cautious about connecting things along roads because it was visually kind of workable. We're also conscious that City of Burlington does want to maintain some other functions between those two things, you know, whether it's the farmer's market or space for artists or other types of buildings and so.
Not necessarily mix of uses in that connecting space. It's just awkward because as a Burlington resident and somebody who uses this area.
Yeah.
The Pine Street corridor is, especially now.
It's very clear.
Very walkable. The farmer's market is down there or was. Um, it feels like one center to me, even though I know Burlingtonians think of the downtown. You know, church could be as the downtown. This is South End and it's a different place, but from a future land use mapping standpoint, they seem.
Overall Burlington, I mean, overall Burlington, I mean, again, trying to be death rush on the future land use map that they have and then the city plan, and they also have like corridors along North Street, to your point about the Old North End, that we had conversations about, should this be a downtown center? You could identify it as a corridor. It should be a little bit more dense than the area around it. They said no. And so.
Headed into a planning process.
They are also doing a an updated city plan um that should be done by March next year.
Yeah, Janet has a question.
Janet.
I'm just wondering, why, why, why not just keep it or call it planned growth area? I mean, what are the implications? Is is it the, is it the downtown program, I guess? Um. There are things that they want to do there that that they can only access through the downtown program? Or community program, I should say, but yeah.
Thanks to the earlier point, you know, uh, we're trying to keep centers or PGA's walkable to centers whenever we can, the best we can. Um, to know how this be a center would be a pretty far distance to walk to other centers in in Burlington and South Burlington. Um, in addition, the intensity of development that's planned here is is more substantial in the area around it, and the built form will be more downtown-like, so that's why it is a downtown or math is downtown center.
Um. I'd bring you next to the South Burlington City Center. This is a legacy new town center uh that has developed with housing, civic uses like the library and city hall. Um, businesses, it's been, there have been public-private partnerships and it, if you haven't been there lately, it's worth a visit. Um, smart growth development in in this area. Um, and and it's becoming a place. I love this picture on the left that Paul shared with me. Um, it celebrates the dedication of this Batilio Drive, which is named after someone who works at a school. It's a little tiny road that goes to the school. The elementary school is connected to this civic center and those kids are all celebrating that with balloons. It's um, it's, it's just a, an example of, of um of of a downtown center that has, has kind of grown up and appears on our map as such.
Uh, what I, what I will say is that, you know, we we do the university mall here. We have a lot of open parking lot space, right? But also we have a city that's adopted zoning regulations to allow fourteen-story structures or twelve-story structures in this area. And so there is a plan to urbanize this area. And as you saw in the housing target slide, South Burlington has the highest municipal housing target in the entire state. And a lot of that growth would be accommodated here in this downtown center.
I think to me, um, it was a question of, are you being too constrained with this?
Hmm.
Because there are things are left out, but if you go down towards the high school is not in it, the fire department is not in it. Um, Kennedy Drive could be more of a hard line to it. And then there are some other areas for possible infill. There's a parcel around Ivy Street. Um, so again, with the successful downtown, are you being perhaps a little bit too constrained?
Right, so I just quickly know since we're at this airport location, that's been designated for special use category. Just kind of footnote-ing, I myself as one board member unclear as to whether or not that's something that we can do, like that that is now.
Uh, we feel like there, that is enabled in statute that our, that our PCs can create a special category.
A special.
Um, it is in forty-three, forty-eight A. Um, I can't remember if it's the bottom of the land use section or at the top, but it is enabled.
It's almost in passing. It's the, and other categories is deemed.
Okay, thank you.
Janet, would you wish to comment on that?
No, I just, I clearly recall that, yes, that is something that is enabled in statute.
Thank you.
Anything else on some of them?
All right, thank you, bearing with us here. We talked a little bit earlier about transition areas and how they're used in different places. This is just one, one example when we're looking at Colchester. Um, and the transition area around Exit sixteen, served by water and sewer, um, pretty close to Winuski. It's, it's a highly valued location for the services that it provides. I know that Colchester residents um see this as a very important part of their community and it's important to the region as well. Um, but then you say, well, what what more could happen there? What might be possible, given the presence of infrastructure and the proximity to to some downtowns and some jobs? So uh, we labeled this as a transition area uh in order to contemplate that. Should mention in the lower right of the PDF that we, the presentation we're looking at, that others may be looking at as a PDF, there is a major infrastructure change coming there with the diverging diamond interchange um at Exit sixteen under construction soon.
To underscore why this area, you know, couldn't be considered PGA despite water and wastewater service to the area, uh, residential uses have gone a lot here um in this future land use area and zoning district in Colchester. And so from our perspective, it didn't meet the definition of PGA.
But not in your ones.
Uh, not in your fries, because I think if you look at enterprise, enterprise talks a lot like quarries and industrial uses and like this, there's, there's some kind of
It more.
No roof.
It's the commercial.
Little reasonable Costco or a little professional services, so transitions seem more appropriate, but I, yeah.
Cut it down to the O'Briens.
Down to O'Brien. This is the last visit.
Last visit, last stop on our site visit. It's in Shelburne. It's a, it's another transition property. You can see, we're zooming into that. You can see how it's attached to PGA, but how it's also within a rural area. So this is the subject of a pre-development agreement between um O'Brien Brothers and the the town of Shelburne. That pre-development agreement was established early this year. The sewer service area was amended to include this area. Uh, it was amended by the town. We mentioned the forthcoming anticipated zoning bylaw update that contains many provisions that need to be passed in order for the development agreement to remain in effect. Um, and so this is planned for, sorry, I don't have the.
Three hundred and seventy-five units.
Three hundred and seventy-five units of housing. Um, the planning is underway as we want to see with a transition area. We are flagging it for you in the event that all the conditions of the pre-development agreement are fulfilled, that this could move into the PGA category in a future vision of the, a future version of this map. Some of those terms include, you know, conserved land, playgrounds, walking and biking infrastructure, both along the streets to get to the front of the property and then paths through the back of the property. So this is one that, you know, in the absence of those changes actually being in effect, we weren't gonna make it paint. But knowing that there is work underway, we we flagged that as transition and it and it could change even before the next submission of our.
Yeah.
And it might be easier for everyone to see the proximity of that to the center if the center was bigger and extended to that four-way intersection um there. Because right now it's hard to see how that parcel is connected.
Pre-development agreement does uh require side, or scoping study, I believe, for sidewalks. Um, or sorry, let me, let me take a look at my notes on that. Uh, see, I have scoping study for pet improvement on Falls Road. Um, per the new zoning that will be adopted, there would have to be sidewalks. And there is, there is sidewalk across that bridge over uh on Falls Road as well, connecting it to the center. But again, again, I hear you about expansion of that.
Well, I'm talking to Matt just a little bit about where the development is on the parcel, you know.
Sure.
Fronting on the north side of the parcel, was it fronting on the southeast side?
Yeah, so per the zoning, the new zoning and the town plan amendment, this front part of the parcel would be more intense up on Irish Hill Road and it'd be less intense in the back. And actually, this parcel uh is part of this parcel and this would actually be conserved. And so pre-development agreement says sixty percent of this total land area will be conserved, forty-five inclusionary units as well.
Checking with the chair, we have a couple. We were going to tell you about our tier one B opt-ins, but I, I look to you for what we should do.
So we're doing good. I think our views are not speak for the board, but I think what I've observed is that we've asked a lot of our questions along the way, although we had on the agenda space and time for questions. I think let's just keep on plugging through. We have a break scheduled at four forty-five. Um, are you fine continuing on the next fifteen minutes?
Right, if you are, we are. Great.
Sounds good.
Uh, here's a list of tier one B opt-ins to date. Uh, you know, I Alex and I already picked on Essex and Colchester. Those are a little bit notable uh ex, ex, exceptions from this list and we are going to continue to work with the municipalities along with the rest that have not opted in yet. So there are seven that have not opted in of our nineteen.
Um, a couple don't have any eligible areas.
Correct, including a field score. Um, we'll see them. Um, we have two partial opt-ins. Um, we know that that is a little atypical. One of them is.
Can we change the screen to the PDF?
Sure, yeah, we can do that.
While you're talking about this.
Thank you. Okay, one second. No, I can, Kate, I got it.
Okay.
I got it.
Thank you, Janet. Make that happen.
Thank you.
No, it's okay. That look okay to you, folks?
Yes.
Uh, so Winuski has decided to only do a partial opt-in. Um, in the area that they uh that is eligible, that they've chosen to exclude is here in the red. This is their downtown core zoning district. Uh, they've opted to they decided to not have this be a part of their opt-in tier one B area because that entire area is already subject to an existing Act Two Fifty master permit that the city is the main uh permit holder of. Um, there's only a few remaining parcels uh left that can be redeveloped, but there are a whole bunch of complex conditions in that permit related to infrastructure, professionally portable housing, et cetera. Um, and the city felt really confident uh just using the process that exists now um and staying within it. Um, then not having it in place anymore. Um, and so they decided, you know, to just take that area out and opt-in for the rest of the city. Any questions on Winuski's reasoning?
Thank you.
Uh, we have Westford. Uh, Westford has also only done a partial opt-in. It is hard to see on the screen, so I will do my best to try to show you. There is this purple outlined area here. It is very small. It cuts or cuts across some parcel boundaries or sorry, within parcel boundaries, but that is the the boundary of their existing neighborhood development area. Um. The municipality is only uh has only opted in to include that area as tier one B. Um, that's where they felt like they had community consensus in terms of where they want to see infill redevelopment uh in their community. They may possibly uh expand this area. Um, Westford is one of those communities where this whole conversation about Act One Eight One, Act One Eight One is really um, had them reflect and want to uh really focus on this topic in their next town plan update in two thousand and twenty-eight. Um, and so I could see this area expanding in the future, but this is what they feel comfortable with right now.
So it looks like it's only seven parcels and one of them is the municipal complex?
Correct.
So uh, per our standards for the regional planning, there shouldn't be application guidelines. As part of final application, I'll strongly urge uh CCRPC to address the requirement that if there are these stats and stock where the area that does not include the entirety of the downtown that are village center planned or the area or village area. that are village center planned north area or village area, the tier one B memorandum must explain the reason that the entire flu area is not proposed for a team of the status. I, I think we have some environmental justice concerns on that front. Urge somebody to elaborate on.
Thank you, Chair. Um, anything else on Westford? Uh, to, to wrap us up, uh, we have two more slides left. So as I just mentioned specifically with Westford, but with a, a whole bunch of our communities, you know, uh, Colchester, Richmond, Charlotte. The conversations about missile housing targets and about the flu map has really led to a lot of conversations at local level about, um, doing more intensive detail, future land use planning in the future. Um, and so I, you know, we're already planning as an RPC to probably amend our regional plan every couple of years, if not more, to be responsive to municipal changes. Because we think our municipalities are, are going to really dive in this topic in the next couple of years. Overall, as an RPC, we're going to continue to work with our municipalities to do that kind of work, to reinforce the smart growth places that we already have, um, through planning work and through bylaw work. But also help them plan, design and construct, uh, new smart growth places. We really appreciate having clear direction from, from you folks and your comments back to us in December about, you know, really what's, what's necessary, what's a good recommendation. You know, we, we just want clarity, you know, in terms of what we need to bring back to our board and to our long-range planning committee about what we need to change. In order to comply with statute.
And our individual municipalities, there are some areas where we've left it with them and we said, we, we think this is the way forward. We want you to know, we may be hearing something different. So when and if we do, being able to bring that back to our towns and say, we received this guidance from the Lervin. Need to change.
And that's a lot to do in a really tight timeline. You know, our original plan does expire in, in June. Um, and so we, we do need to adopt the original plan. We are planning to have our first public hearing in January. If that goes well, um, we can be responsive to comments, get a new draft out, warn the second public hearing in March and have that second public hearing in May. Ideally, the plan is adopted at that May meeting and then may bring the plan to you folks in June or July next year. So with that, that's Kate Knight. We can open up to questions.
So I think I'll also use that transition mark to explain sort of our next steps before we get into questions, in case people have questions. What will happen after today is we will, um, take all the comments that we've received, board member comments, and by December twenty-second, the board will, uh, send back full comments on the pre-application. So that's something that we're going to anticipate working out over a couple of different meetings. I think we have two going at the same time and we're trying not to overlap. Like everybody, I think, uh, an RPC is due the twelfth and you're due the twenty-second. So that's what will be the bulk of our next few meetings is to try and sort of work through the comments. You may have seen us work through on what ones you jump land in similar fashion. And then on the twenty-second, hopefully vote on, uh, comments to send to you. So that's a bit of what will be happening after today. I'm going to ask for questions from the board member first before we get into questions in public. We do a break and at four forty-five, they will be trying to some of it as well, so. Questions from the boards, Janet, are you, do you have any questions for us at this time?
I do not.
Not really a question, but just a comment from one board member. I noticed in the agency of transportation comments that there was reference to an Act One Eighty-One related AOT study that is underway and nearing the finish line. And, um, would encourage the RPC to, you know, take a look at that information when it becomes available and consider that its plan could, could, you know, reflect areas to help support, you know, transportation infrastructure and, and projects. Because, you know, with Act One Eighty-One and the elimination of Act Two Fifty jurisdiction in tier one A and housing up to fifty units in tier one B areas, you know, this Chitney County is really where a, a lot of that effect would be seen, you know, statewide here, probably the most, right? I think it's very important to think about that.
I've been actively participating in that advisory committee. Yeah, I think we're, you know, I think this whole system change, which is what, thank you, volunteering to participate in, is, is shifting things from dealing with things at permitting stage to getting upstream and focusing on what's planned. So we do a lot of work already with Vtrans in terms of planning infrastructure, you know, as exit sixteen was a scoping study we did twelve years ago. Um, and so I think it's going to move more of those decisions upfront. You know, the, and the issue, the disconnect that has existed in Vermont between state agencies and municipalities is this, what this is, this whole system change is trying to connect those better. So I think that's going to be the question of like, how does Vtrans or how do municipalities, depending on which direction you're coming from, connect on some of these bigger transportation project issues? I'm not sure we're going to solve it here, but it's a legislative issue. There is no great way right now for Vtrans to engage in a municipal review, um, for state transportation improvement.
Particularly if it's not right on the state highway.
Yeah, unless, without the eleven love permit. So yes, to answer your, to respond to your comment. And for those of you who aren't very familiar, the reason I said ninety percent, ninety percent of the money that has been collected through the Act One Forty-five process through Act Two Fifty has been related to Chitney County projects. And so it is significant, it wasn't a significant amount of projects. It, it's been significant in that it's enabled developers to go through the permitting process. Right, and have a path through without waiting for a project to get done. So I think that would be a question, is our project getting hung up in the municipal level from traffic impact study reviews? And we need to kind of repatch that, what One Forty-five did, uh, into the municipal system to, to last platform.
But to be clear too, it's also been significant in that it has, um, not, it, it has alleviated the situation of the, you know, developer that, that triggers that, you know, level of service app or whatever the case may be that, that for which a major transportation improvement is needed to support the development.
Fairness.
Not only that one developer incur all of that expense, so it provides that cost sharing mechanism. So anyhow, we'll be interested to see what the final report looks like and thank you for, um, considering that.
Just want to tell you how much I appreciate the engagement that you clearly have, um, been involved in. And also being, and not just on an individual or the EJ level, but also with the municipalities. Because, um, one of, one big concern that I have heard from, uh, citizens is a concern about the top-down sort of approach from the regional planning commissions. And I really appreciate hearing this was, you know, worked out in collaboration with the towns. And, um, you know, and while maybe, you know, some of those issues, we do need to look a little more carefully about. I do appreciate, um, the deference that has been shown to our communities because it's, it's vital that this is not somebody showing up and telling now Vermonters how their communities are going to be reorganized. And so I really do, um, appreciate all the effort that you have provided in that regard, so.
Thank you. There, there are at least two people, three people who are not here who are a big part of that. Our, our colleagues, Anne Nelson Stoner, Sarah Muskin and Darren Schibler, who helped design the outreach and then implement the outreach. And Melanie is here and has also been a part of the effort in terms of the interfaces online. Emma Vaughn, all of, I'd like to thank Academy. I mean, it really has been a, a, a team, a team effort.
Yeah, I've been ten panelists probably working on this project for a year.
It was particularly interesting to me to see the fact that you reported on what people who are not typically at the table, what they said. And, and it didn't look like you applied much varnish to it, like it was. It was looked like real comments from people, many of which probably did not have much experience, being in those settings and understanding these processes. So it was refreshing to see those. And I was, and again, like brought a lot of appreciation for that effort. I think you've gone well beyond what any other we did in the state is, have done or will do on that front. And partly you have to, because you have a much more engaged community here, but you did it. And so kudos on that.
Thank you.
Uh, substantive comment though, I'm looking through my notes on all the various FLOU areas. And the one thing that I haven't already said, and I've said too much, and apologies, I, I live here, so I have to be good news. I, I don't, I see a lot of comments in my notes about, why isn't there enterprise district here? And we, we talked about some of that, you know, you, you made me look at the stature description again. It's, it's not just resource extraction areas, it was, you know, commercial industrial parks. And there are examples in Burlington, the Queen City Park area seems like it should be that. There's areas, um, in Essex on Central Road that you, that the mapping has left out. The Watch It Ovens and other, you know, recent developments on that road that seem enterprise. And so I, I would just encourage you as you, you know, we'll get your comments as a board, but, you know, just generally to think about that land use and, um, understand that it's not eligible for the tier one and A and one B. And so there's some, it, it was a wrong term. Isn't it?
Well, if I can just, um, heard you, I think that is something we'll take a look at. The, I would also, I'll, uh, flip it around and ask the board to give, you know, when the plant growth area definition was written, I mean, I think if you look at it now, it still talks about the enterprise areas being included in them.
Right.
So there was kind of conscious discussion in the legislature about those distinctly employment areas. Like it's employment only, right? Like that's what we're talking about. Being that they are part of the community and not separate from the community. So I think that's, that is the debate, you know, where is it truly something separate? They're certainly not eligible for one B because one B is only for housing, right? But one of the reasons that you may see a municipality in particular want to include that employment district within their larger plant growth area is that those areas are eligible for one A. So, sorry, that was, I apologize for reacting in a way that interrupted your thought.
No, I appreciate the clarification.
Because so that, you know, and I think even when Winuski, you know, was like thinking like, no, they don't want to necessarily step into regulating that, so they're like, no, we want to exclude that enterprise area. Whereas maybe in, uh, South Burlington or Burlington.
Burlington, Quincy Barc.
They want like, keep wanting it. They wanted it to be potentially available for one A.
Yeah, okay, and I, I hear that, so I'm glad you've, you've done the thinking on that one. Maybe to crystallize the comment and react a little bit is to say, where do you have enterprise areas adapted by already? Make sure they include the full scope of those enterprise areas. Central Road, Essex is an example, it doesn't, that should be changed in my. So, you know, there are other, um, the interment is another example, we've got to make a new generating plant in, but gardener supply is not. That, that doesn't compute to me, but maybe there's a reason. But anyways, so I take your point and that's a good point and I understand what you're saying, I'm pleased in part. But where you do have enterprise, like think about what the boundaries should look like. And I tried to look at the base zoning underneath those. And frequently those areas are zoned for industrial land use. So I'm like, that sounds like an enterprise district to me, or, or at least land use area.
When I look at, uh, Saxon Hill in Essex, you know, that area, you know, it did, uh, North Park is in PGA now. The South Park's an enterprise. The differentiating factor there right now for us at least is, is the water sewer service area. So North Park has water sewer service, South Park doesn't. That was kind of our differentiation between, um, but yeah, I get it.
I'm not convinced that that's a reason to have them in two different land use areas. I think an enterprise area can be served by one reservoir, uh, can also be marked in PGA.
Well, I, I think it's one of those tough, tough situations because I, I think for all the things that I've been articulating is you've gone above and beyond with including, um, input from so many different communities, so many different, um, people within the communities and the plan is a reflection of that. And so you have a lot more individuality as you move from town to town. And I, I think that's something that we've seen more here than we have in other areas so far. And I, I think that's makes it a little bit tougher to explain some of those edges and some of those decisions as to what's in, what's out. I, I think one of the circles is to keep that sort of regional perspective on that ten thousand foot where there's, um, to, I think where Alex is trying to sort of articulate is that there's some level of uniform that could sort of pass muster, be explained overall, um, yet still, and, and that's a balancing act, to yet retaining, um, the individuality of those communities and their ability, um, to be reflected in that. So I, I think those are good challenges that we've articulated. That's part of the pre-application process is for us to learn a bit more. I very much appreciate learning a lot more. And we'll get comments back and then there's the final application. So this is a iterative process that will play a role in, um, before we move to a break, I see that Janet has her hand up. Janet?
Just to, to point out that I think this kind of extensive, um, work that Chitney County did with its communities is, I think, probably going to inform the statute. And, you know, if the board comes down on, you know, in a particular way that, you know, the statute just doesn't allow this, I think, um, you know, this kind of really engaged process can inform changes to statute in the future that, that will make this even more workable.
Chair.
Thank you, Janet, for saying that. And I just want to note to somebody who was, you know, in the room quite a bit when this was getting written. It was not written for Chitney County, which you can tell, I hope you can tell that, right? It doesn't, you know, there's no suburban, urban, you know, growth area. It's all this planned growth area. So I'm just, uh, this is going to stretch all of our bounds of like, how does this all fit into this kind of somewhat rigid box that we were given? So I thank you for, uh, whatever thought and discretion and efforts you can put into trying to make this work.
Unless anyone has anything else that they'd like to add in this time, I'd like to move us to break. But I will recognize that when we come back for break, we have, um, questions and comments from state partners. So to see if our board members have any comments before we move to break. Going once, going twice, I will then ask for a recess until five o'clock. We'll come back and take questions from our state partners. Thank you. All right, it's 5:50. I'd like to get it rolling again. Thank you all for those that stuck around online and also in person. The next portion of our meeting, and so about 5:30 is reserved for our state partners for a questions and comments that they might have. I see a few that have joined us online, and if you would like to offer comments or have questions, please raise your hand. And we will recognize you one by one.
No pressure though, because some of you may just be here to listen. Cheryl. And just, yeah.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Van Nuys. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great. I'm just now joining, so I'm not sure where my comments fit into the context of this meeting. But I wanted to say that I see Act 250 as.